Good morning. Welcome to our Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for October 27, 2015. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'd like to report on our closed session pursuant to government code section 54957.6, personal matter, conference with lever negotiator Judy Hawkins, Debbie County Administrator Officer, Human Resources and Risk Management Deputy Sheriff's Association, DSA, Sheriff's Management Unit, SMU, and Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA, and Service Employees International Union, SEIU, negotiations, human resources director. There's nothing to report out. No action taken. And with that, I'd like to ask the board if there's any comments or announcements. So we can move into public comments. So, public comments are, any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking any action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the board supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the consent agenda. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued at the conclusion of the regular agenda in order to provide an opportunity for remainder of the comments to be heard.
My name's Bonnie Newman. I'm from Double Springs. Two things. First, Cliff, I'd like to get the address of that asphalt plant in Tahoe because I'm going to be in Fernley and all weekend and I want to go check with the neighbors. And that's, I'll be leaving on Thursday, so...
Before you leave today, I'll get it to you.
Perfect. The second thing is, I'd like to talk about something that almost relates to the asphalt factory. Where do we live? What's the name of our county, folks? Calaveras, okay? In case you forgot, or, you know, it wasn't a refrain here. Calaveras. What does that mean? It's a Spanish word that stands for...
Skulls.
Skulls. Why are we called skulls? That's a symbol of death. Why are we known as a county with a symbol of death? It's because when we first started 150, 200 years ago, this was the Wild West. You could kill a man for stealing your horse, no problem. You could kill a man for jumping your claim, no problem. You could kill a man for cheating at cards, no problem. You could kill a man for thinking he had stole your horse, no problem. We killed people right and left. There was no respect for life. We became known as La Tierra de los Ríos de Calaveras, the land of the rivers of skulls because all of our stream beds and riverlets were covered with white orbs of people who had been murdered in a kind of ethnic cleansing that happened over and over and over around the mining claims. The white men, the Indians, the Mexicans, the Puerto Ricans, I mean, the Portuguese, the Chinese, people were murdered right and left, and we were known as the land of death. What's wrong with death? Death is the ultimate result of life. Nobody can avoid it. Nobody can get around it. We have to embrace it because that is where we're all going to end up. That's a resource that we have here. We could become, we could capitalize upon our namesake, the Las Calaveras, and become a place where people come to retire and pass on into eternity in a beautiful setting. Granted, some of us has lost the beauty, but in 30 years, things will grow back. We'll have trees and bushes and green once again. I'm proposing an embracement of the death industry. We should have a satellite office of the Neptune Society. We may have a crematorium to help people not have to go to other counties. We can help with moving into death. I'm thinking in terms of medical marijuana. Embrace it, support it, and tax it. Okay? You want to know how to get some more money in this county? Think of helping people come to a nice end to their struggle in life, whether it's due to old age, or some chronic disease, or disability that gives them six to 12 months to live. Become a place that's known for comfort, and beauty, and eternal rest, if necessary. Because we are known as Las Calaveras, the county of skulls. I think it's worth capitalizing upon, and I think you should think about it, rather than subjecting our communities to things that will make us die quicker. Thank you.
I'm Peter Reese from General. The young lady forgot to mention plan better and to also. Thank you.
Al Segal, Taxpayer Association. That's a pretty hard act to follow. I don't have any props, but I have some good news. There was an article in the paper, in the Enterprise, not long ago, about the possibility of Calaveras County becoming part of a new state, 51st state. And at first, when I heard about that, I said, "No way, that's crazy. Man, that's over the top. That's weird. Besides that, I like California." Then I found out more about it, and I changed my mind. A lot of the problems that Sacramento has, besides being out of control, could be changed by part of the California Constitution. One of the problems we have is that there's not enough understanding of the principles of our Constitution. And one of the principles that our founding fathers attempted to do was to prevent the United States from falling into a democracy and destroying itself. Apparently, the age of, historical age of democracies, pure democracies is maybe a couple hundred years, and then they implode. Usually, they loot the treasury. But the founding fathers did this by putting checks and balances. One house was to be elected by the states indirectly. The other one, by the population, which that would be the democratic part of it. And that worked out pretty good. It prevented government from going hog wild and expand itself and destroying the liberty of the people. State of California in 1964 destroyed the Republic of California and established a democracy. This allowed the places with the highest population, like the Bay Area, Southern California, Los Angeles, to control the rural areas. Everybody here is aware of that now. The most glaring example is the phony fire fee, which is really a fire tax. And it all seems hopeless until this new movement came along, and apparently, these 11 counties already signed up for it. And Calaveras and Tuamee Counties are invited to join. To make a long story short, we had a Calaveras County Taxpayer Association host a public access TV program called Taxpayer Alert, where many of you have been guests. Some of our guests are really good. The moderator, the only problem is the moderator, but the guests are really super. And one of them is Steve Baird, who was the speaker at the meeting in San Andreas about this 51st state. Well, tonight, I understand it's going to be uploaded to YouTube, and I'll have it posted on our website, and I'll also email you a copy of the 30-minute program. Should be very interesting. As time goes by, the promoters of this need to inform the public, and they need to generate sufficient support which would allow our county to become another one of the counties working for this new state. I want to thank you for the good work you do.
Mary Wilson, McCollum Hill. A couple of meetings ago, I told you about our dear supervisor from the adjoining county who came over and took a look at my trees. Well, as I was catching up on the Twitter feed from my, from the law firm that is in one of the law firms in the county that is handling claims to do with the fire, they had forwarded a tweet that led me to a blog of San Francisco newspaper wherein a blogger, I'm not sure how this works, maybe they're paid anyway, had gone up Mountain Ranch Road with a friend or relative that apparently lives in, over the other side of the county, and had taken photos of the Butte Fire. So I was looking, I thought, "Well, more photos of the Butte Fire. I wonder what's in here." And it's very strange how you can recognize your own tree with a red cross on it, just a portion of the tree with a red cross. I thought, "Well, that's interesting. Let's see what the next one is." It turns out that five out of the 12 photos that this person had taken had been taken on my property when I gave them no permission to go on the property and take photographs, panoramic views, and other comments such as, "I wonder what it must have felt like emotionally if you came home to this." And interestingly enough, they have a photo of my old Mercedes, several of them, and one of them still has the license plate firmly displayed on it. There is no way that these people could ever have taken these photos without coming onto my land. So, just a word, people are still trespassing on property, and I frankly find it in very poor taste that the San Francisco news publishing company should have chosen to take those photos and put them on their blog. And I know that the local news people would not do that. They come and ask me if they thought that it was a good photo representative of the fire, which apparently, my place seems to be. So, thank you for listening, and have a good meeting.
Any other public comments?
Dennis Mills. On a lighter note, maybe, just to remind everyone that there is a business symposium that will be going on next Monday at Frog Town. It's sponsored by the Calaveras Women's Network, the Chamber of Commerce, and EDC. And we have a number of local business professionals that will be putting on workshops there. For those that are interested, do please contact either EDC or Chamber or Women's Network for more information. I'm sure it'll be a big benefit for those that would be interested in improving their business skills. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other public comments?
Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, for the benefit of the record, and those that don't know, me, my name is Kaz Tomaszewski. I'm the Executive Director of the Calaveras Cannabis Alliance. I'm here today to issue a statement on the recent shooting in railroad flat. Firstly, obviously, we were horrified and gravely disappointed that this revolved around the cannabis grow. We want to make it clear that everyone involved in these shootings was completely unknown to CCA leadership. They were not members. We have not even been able to find a single one of our members who knew them. Apparently, they are very new. We'd like to issue our condolences to everyone involved and to the community at large. In coming days, we expect to see a lot of anti-cannabis detractors linking crime and violence like this to our trade. It's one of the reasons that we advocate for ethical standards amongst growers and for an active relationship with law enforcement, which has done a fantastic job in recent years of protecting growers and enforcing state and local ordinances. We believe that crime like this is not the result of the cannabis trade, but it is a result of an unregulated cannabis trade. When there are valuable commodities that are not regulated by the government, they're handed over to black markets which draw crime. And even as that system begins to be broken down with new ordinances and new laws, even ethical growers attempting to be on the right side of ethics and the law often feel unsupported and don't have access to theft and damage insurance, security services, they don't yet feel safe calling the sheriff, and therefore, they can, even good people can make horrible mistakes. We think that incidences like these are part of a dying breed. We believe that more and more growers are feeling supported by the county, by law enforcement, are being made aware of the laws that protect them, and are choosing to take advantage of those things. And it is our continuing mission to make sure that these incidences like these go away. We are absolutely committed to the county, and to the community, and to you in making sure that happens. We know that there's a lot going on with fire relief, and there's a lot of pressing issues, but when this conversation does come up, we are here, and we are ready to collaborate, and we are behind this board in the creation of an intelligent and comprehensive ordinance which handles issues like these and can support and incentivize ethical and lawful growing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Garral. I'm the 4-H program representative for University of California Cooperative Extension. I just wanted to give an update on what's going on in our program. We're right now beginning new enrollments with members and leaders, and it's looking like a really good year. We're starting a new shooting sports program, really hoping that this works out, and I think it's going to. So, we've got a great leader that's going to be coming through the ranks and going through the training to do that. And we have now three LEGO projects in the program, which is really nice because we're in three separate clubs. So, we're actually looking at putting on a new event this spring for that. We have a new canning and food preservation project beginning, and we just wrapped up the Ironstone Concourse. I don't know if any of you had a chance. Cliff, I think you did. Didn't you? Were you there, the Ironstone Concourse, the elegance car show?
Like, can't remember, actually.
I thought I saw you there.
Quite a few months here.
But, yeah, we had almost like around 400 vehicles that came, I mean, cars, trailers, motorcycles, and there was even a 23-window Volkswagen bus, which is a Samba, and it was ragtop. It was cool. So, that was a great event. It's a benefit for 4-H, for FFA, and for state fair scholarships. So, we, this project that we're beginning this spring, it's actually an event that I will be inviting all the board of supervisors to. It's a Legos buildup challenge, and we're also going to be inviting local architects and engineers to judge and sponsor the event, which should be fun. Cliff, you had mentioned with our 4-H All-Stars about doing a jacket presentation. We do have a brand-new All-Star that Kenny Reed, he did complete his project, and his jacket's been ordered, so I want to work that out.
Great. If we can get that information, that'd be great.
Yes, where he can be presented that here at one of the meetings, so hopefully, we can work that out. He goes to Calaveras High, and he drives, so hopefully, we can do that. Do you have any questions of me? Is everyone receiving my newsletter?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Just to be clear, I did not attend this year's Concourse, elegance. I was there last year.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't recall.
Took a few seconds to get it there, so...
It was really great. I think it was like the biggest show ever.
Right.
A lot of variety of foreign vehicles, American vehicles.
I think we're all looking forward to the next one.
Yeah, without a catastrophe attached to it, that'd be really great.
There were some distractions this year.
Well, that's exactly it, and thank you for bringing that up because with the 4-H program, of course, we have the Mountain Ranch 4-H Club, and there's actually a group in Sonora that is going to be putting on a dinner in Mountain Ranch to help the victims of 4-H and the families. We did have one family that lost a home completely. We had a family that had a shop that was separate from their house, so thank goodness, their home was saved, and the shop was their livelihood because the husband, he does woodworking for a living. So, all that is gone, and, yes, so that's been a struggle. And then, another family where their home was saved, but they ended up having their windows blown out where it was because of the heat, but the home is there, so...
Was that a modular home?
No, I don't know that. I don't, not from what I was told, I don't think so, but either way, I mean, that's been the impact, of course, and so, I've got some incredible volunteers that have been working with the fairgrounds and with animal relocation, it's been a big issue, and feed, and just keeping the animals going, because fair, that's another big issue that's going on right now with that fire, so...
When you get more information about the benefit for the Mountain Ranch 4-H, could you please get that to us?
Absolutely. Yes, I put it on our Facebook page. I don't know if you ever...
It is already?
Yes. I don't know if you take a look at that. They are going to update it after their next meeting. They'll be having a meeting soon to kind of, they already have a date off the top of my head. I don't know when it is, but it is coming up soon, but it's, yes, it's going to be a good thing. I mean, how cool.
Thank you.
For Sonora, you know, Tuamee County, so, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Chair, I have a comment. So, Jennifer, I just want to thank you for your work at Concourse. I was there. One of the nice components about this event is the wonderful contribution that the Kautz family makes to the 4-H program and FFA. What I always enjoy, in addition to the cars, and when I saw the VW, I thought of you, but...
It's on my cellphone.
Are the fact that the kids also have exhibits on display, so I think it's a nice way to showcase their talent and to let people know that, you know, where their money is going, and it's investing in the youth, and the various displays of the various programs that we have in our school system and through FFA and 4-H.
Yes, that setup, Debbie, was incredible, that people had to walk through the displays to get into the car show. And we had, some of the kids were doing leather crafting, they had their poultry projects, they had their other animals, they had all kinds of things.
Had so much. It was really nice.
Display boards, and really interacting with the public, so that was, I liked that setup this year.
Yeah, good experience and good exposure, so...
So, thank you.
You guys always do a good job everywhere you go on presenting good displays for, through 4-H.
Thank you.
Everywhere I've ever seen, you know, even at Kids' Day, same thing, they came down and interact with the kids that come in there, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
Any other public comments?
Bill McManus, Calaveras Project. As we get along with the news today, couldn't help but thinking of the news of yesteryear, some 25 years ago, when this county was shattered, and the world was shocked at the horrific murders attributed to Charles Zeng and Leonard Lake. It imposed a huge burden on a small county with a young district attorney named John Martin, who's had to spend millions of dollars, much of it state money, to see that trial through. The stigma that was attached to the county seemed like it took a long time to get over. We were always the county where Charles Zeng committed his horrible crimes. But in thinking back on that in those times, we were able to determine that that was pure evilness, and people would ask questions like, "Is there something we can do to stop that?" Or, "Why didn't somebody see it?" Just as we do today with school shootings, and mass murders, and all sorts of evilness in the world. You can't predict evil, it just happens. Now, here we are again with the headlines spread out of a triple homicide in Calaveras County. Now, we look at it, is this evil? Some might say, "Yes." And then, we ask the question again, "Is there something that could have been done to prevent this?" In this case, in my humble opinion, I think there was. The existence of unregulated Wild West, shoot 'em up, marijuana growing in Calaveras County came before you in April. You had an opportunity to do something about it. You had an opportunity to do what other counties who have experienced this type of crime and have found a solution, you didn't do it, you know? And it wasn't because you weren't aware of it. I'm not big on "I told you so's," but hearken back to those days when I was advising you, pleading with you, giving you information, telling you what other counties were doing, how they learned their lesson to do something about this problem. And you turned your back on the county and on your obligations, and so, in some ways, the genesis of this crime belongs in this room. There was something you could have done about it. In the future, I hope that you will reconsider this. You will take this into account. You will try to do something that will prevent this from happening again. Now, I hate to sound harsh, I have received phone calls and emails from dozens of people across the county. They would all like to say the same thing to you, but quite frankly, they're afraid. They're afraid to approach government on this particular subject for fear of retribution, and they just don't feel, they'll come and argue about, you know, other topics, or discuss it with you, but this particular topic seems to strike fear into the hearts of our seniors and others. And believe it or not, Calaveras County, if you look at the demographics, is a very senior county. So, I told them that I would be their voice. I believe it. I believe it in my heart, and so, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, not in a cruel, or mean, or vindictive way, but say, "Look, look what's happened. We could have done something about..." We could have done something about it. You could have done something about it. And I hope you consider that as we continue through this process. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Joe Kelly from the Unrepresented Area District One. What I hold in my hand here is a grant deed. It's dated June 9, 2006. The document number is 2006-10992, just for your information, in case you should want to look it up. I will leave this copy with the CAO's office when I walk out of here, if Mr. Moss is in. You remember on the 20th where I discussed a subsequent resolution, I said June 6. I want to retract that. It was June 26, 2007, authorizing execution of a subdivision agreement and approving the final map for Olive Orchard Estates tracks 2003-157. That day, I discussed a whole lot of issues where that property had changed hands. This document is the first of that change. And it took it out of Olive Orchard, pardon me, CRV Enterprises, Inc., and changed it to Old Golden Oaks LLC, a California Limited Liability Company. What I reported to on you on the 20th was all the other changes. So you have a contract in front of you, not in front of you now, but in your possession on Olive Orchard Estates, that the only real signature on it is Mr. Voorhees's and the county board chair at that time. And now you folks don't want to bring back an issue and get this whole thing sorted out so that the people can know what's going on. This process, nine planning directors, at least five public works directors, county council, three, times of change from then until now. There's a problem here. And it needs to be cured in this county so that all the information is there within all the document, and everybody knows what it is. There was a big surprise when I pulled this up, was able to get it, I should say. It surprised me. This was a year and 19 days before what I talked about on June 26, 2007. The county's not staying up to date, and I don't believe it's the fault of the employees because they're working, working as hard as they can. But this thing where the denial of a appeal, it's not good. You need to bring it back. I again request that Mr. Olivera, as the only one that can bring it back, brings it back. Or that if he can't bring, it doesn't want to, if you're able to bring the contract back, bring the contract back so that the people of Calaveras County, skulls, can understand what you are doing, not necessarily for us, but to us, and your liability as a county, as a county representatives. Now, don't get me wrong. I said before, he builds good homes. I approve of his project. It's just the way it's going about and trying to get out of an obligation he signed on for as a mitigated negative declaration. And that was fully under SEQA. So there's the other issue. I thank you for your time.
Any other public comments? Any other 4H groups out there that want to come up here? That'd be great. All right, so I've been asked to, asked the board for, oh, we're going to go to the consent agenda. That's where we're going. All right. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. So does anybody, any member of the public wish to pull a consent agenda item?
Number five, six, and 15.
Any other member of the public wish to pull any other items on the consent agenda? Okay. Any? Seventeen. Okay, anybody else? Any board members wish to pull an item?
I concur with 15.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the remainder.
Okay, I have a motion by Supervisor Wright to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
And Supervisor, motion by Supervisor Kearney, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so number five, Mr. Race.
Yes, sir. I'd like to have some clarification on this. Is the probation department going to be, it's like a side job for him, or is that going to be in behalf of the county? Because according to page 24, basically, I'm sorry, 23, they're going to be independent contractor. Now, who is the independent contractor? Is that the county? The probation department? Who's going to get the 15% bounty money? The county? The probation department? For administration? I'd like to have clarification on it. Maybe I missed something on it. Also, are these being hired for the whole state, or is just the local jurisdiction? Or is that for the whole county, whole state, or localization? I did not see any definite clarification on that also. So I would like to have, just let me know. There's nothing against the probation department, nothing against you. Hey, 15% commission is damn good money, okay? But also, there's going to be substantial liability because some people don't really want to pay up that easy, so.
Are you asking who's going to get the 15%? Peter?
Pardon me?
I'm not sure that I understand your question. Are you asking who's going to get the 15%?
Well, who is getting the, they make a contract with the county. The probation department is going to be the administrator, the executor of this collection. They, somebody's going to get 15%. Is that going to come to the county treasurer? Is that going to go to budget of the probation department? And who's going to carry the liability for those folks who are going to go out and try to collect this money?
Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Sam Leach, Chief Probation Officer. Just to clarify, because I know that this one's a little confusing, we are one of the few jurisdictions in the state, one of the few county jurisdictions that's actively pursuing this. This item, number five, is basically in response to millions of dollars of uncollected money that we've had sitting there. Basically, you know, we can only go so far in collection efforts locally as far as trying to get this money. The Franchise Tax Board for the state has a lot more resources to be able to go after people and put liens on stuff and whatnot. So this, the 15% collection, to get to the simple answer first, that's the states, that's the state franchise board fee, so it's 15% that's tacked on, on top of what the people already owe. And we'll be passing that along to the offender who hasn't paid what it is that they were supposed to pay. So that's a little unfortunate, but keep in mind that this is only after somebody has been convicted of a crime, gone to court, come to us for a pre-sentence report where we've investigated, spoken with the victim, determined what the restitution should be, made a recommendation to the court. The court has then said, yes, that's how much is owed, and made an order that the offender pay that amount of money. Then we make all due diligent efforts to collect that money. And a lot of times, frankly, people either may have the ability to pay and don't, and it's something that a lot of people don't get reimbursed it on. Maybe they're doing everything else, but they're not making their payments. And then this money just goes uncollected, and we end up with a huge balance. We had a few, there are private firms that will do this, or we could go this route and contract with the Franchise Tax Board. 15% is actually a pretty, it is a good chunk of, of change. I agree, if you owe the money, but the fact is, these people should be paying the money. And when they don't pay the money, we need recourse to go after them. This was the, the decision we made. And again, this won't be coming out of our budget. The money, there will be some money coming back into our budget in theory because if we're collecting more money, some of that is fines and fees. The state is going to take their 15%. So if there's a $100 payment, let's say, 15 of that is going to go to the state. The other 85 is going to go to the victim first, then it comes back to our fines and fees. So there are victims that don't receive money. Franchise tax board will help us with that. Then secondary to that, they'll be helping us get money back for fines and fees that help supplement our budget.
Sam, this, this is similar to the list that I gave you months ago, right?
It is very similar. It's a, just a different way of pursuing it. And, you know, there's only a few counties doing it now. I, I think it's becoming more popular. It's being talked about in probation business circles.
One of the questions that Peter asked was who gets the money? If I remember how it was explained to me, that's not an easy question to answer because every fine may have the money going to different plots.
Yeah, that's correct. It won't surprise anybody that California has one of the most complicated restitution distribution laws.
So it's not, it would be a very difficult question to answer for the entire list because each fine may have a different requirement. The only thing you can count on is 15% goes to the Franchise Tax Board, right?
Yeah, that's accurate, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Just a quick question. He said millions of dollars, millions of dollars statewide or millions of dollars countywide that affect, with that would be hundreds of millions statewide. So I just want to know how much, like, locally, yeah, that's.
Locally, yes.
I want to thank the gentleman for clarifying many things. So you're not going to get the, county's not going to get the 15%. Okay, fine. But it does going to increase his workload, that's wonderful. Because according to this on page 23, somebody's going to be an independent contractor. Contractor and agent and employees of a contractor, in a performance of this agreement, shall act as an independent capacity and not an officer, employees, or agent of the state. So any potential, if there is any harm to this gentleman, which I hate to see, he's too nice of a guy, the county is going to be stopped. Now, is there going to be any idea how much money? They're going to be collecting, collecting money in behalf of the court? Wonderful. Now, I don't know if they allow to carry firearms and so on, but you might come across some bad people in this county once in a while, rarely. Is that going to increase our liability for this gentleman to collect bad money? I mean, is the state going to give him anything extra? Is the state going to give the board of supervisors anything extra? I'm sure it will be nice to collect money that's due. I'm all for it. But what is it going to cost? And what's going to be the cost benefit and liability? And that has not been, really been clarified. If you guys know, please, that's wonderful. I take it off the air, and you can tell me, set me straight. What's the cost and what's the benefit? Analysis on this deal. Thank you.
Board Chair, I just wanted to clarify, the provision that Mr. Race is referring to on page 23 is just an independent contractor clause. Under the contract, the contractor is the probation department. So it's basically saying that the probation department, employees of the county probation department are not acting in the capacity of, of, they're not acting as agents of the state. They're still just employees of the county. They aren't, through this contract, agents of the state.
Okay, so he was just strictly working in the benefit of this county collection?
Correct.
He's not going to go out of the county?
No.
Thank you.
I have a question. What does the state Franchise Tax Board have to do with this if it's not involving non-payment of state taxes? If we're talking about things that harm is done by people in the county, why, why have the state Franchise Tax Board be involved at all? It seemed like the courts can, they make a judgment, it goes on record, and then the county enforces that judgment, I understand, through the, through the probation department. And it seemed like there should be an administrative fee paid for the, paid to the people that are doing the work to enforce the judgment. I just don't understand how, how the state is getting involved in this if it's not taking responsibility. Thank you.
Actually, it's a method of collection. It's a tax intercept program. So if you're getting, if you owe the probation department, or through the probation department, fines or penalties, restitution, whatever, that they have on their books and you're not paying it, that, and you're getting a refund from the state on your, when you file your taxes, they can intercept that refund to repay, make payment to the probation department for those fines, penalties, and restitutions.
Yeah, correct. And we don't have the capacity to do that. So what, what we basically do when people are on an active program of supervision, when they're on probation, you know, we're kind of holding that over their head to try to get money. Once they're off probation, the state just has so much better ability to put liens, assess it. We, we can't do that, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments on this?
I move we approve.
Second. Yes, we had a motion by Supervisor Kearney, second by Supervisor Wright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Good. Number six, Peter. Thank you, Sam. Hey, Sam, thank you for all that you guys did on the evacuation process, too. We appreciate that during the fire. Thank you very much.
On number six, we didn't talk about much money, but I just wondered, was this put out to bid, or was it decided it's an accepted amount? Thank you.
Mary Sewicki, Director of Health and Human Services. This was not put out to bid because this is a company that we have the existing furniture through, and it, it's creating the additional modules that we already have that would then keep the office consistent.
And because of the amount of the contractor, it wasn't required to put out to bid, but the person, the vendor that is used is under California Commodities, which actually has already gone out to bid with certain vendors to get the lowest prices for equipment, furniture, et cetera.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from the public on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mike?
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by, first, let me ask, are there any other members of the public that wish to comment on this? That was awful quick. Okay, so seeing none, we have a motion by Supervisor Wright, second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed. Okay, number 15, Peter.
I feel discriminated against. It, it's nice that District Two has a nice number of people on, on this organization. And I want to thank Mr. Kearney, Supervisor Kearney, to be representative. But this is kind of tilted over here, folks. One, two, plus, I believe, number, District Number Two Supervisor's on it? No?
I'm not on it.
They don't like you, that's all.
That's okay.
But I haven't seen anybody from District Five. Does this organization have something against people in District Five? Were they notified and so on? So I just want to express my feeling of being discriminated, and it hurts me. I'm a sensitive person. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any, uh, public comments?
Bill McManus, Calaveras Project, resident of district three. We've had this discussion at the cog meeting and some other places. Now that we're in, the full board is all together, I would like to express my disappointment and sometimes outrage that my district does not have a representative on the cog board. As we go back in the years, all sorts of things have happened, but I don't think there's any excuse for any district to go unrepresented with at least a citizen representative on the cog. It involves a lot of money, projects, um, you know, they, people need to be vetted, you're spending our money, citizens are spending our money. So, we need, we need to have some, some input there and make sure that it's equitably distributed and that projects in the hinterlands of, of the county get their hearing for, for funds and to see if we can make our community better. At this point, without sounding harsh, to me, it appears as though one supervisor is appearing to load the cog up with people that could, um, vote in a certain way, and, you know, all of this happening at the beginning of the year, which coincides with an election season. So, I think the appearance of impropriety is, is there, whether there is an actual impropriety, I don't know. I know what is improper, and that's that my district doesn't have a cog member, and there are other districts in this county that do. And I think the board should do everything it can to get full representation for the county, so that all of the projects come before the controlling authority for fair consideration. Thank you.
Marty Crane, I think one of the main things that we really have to keep in mind is that the cog is about regional planning, not individual districts, it's regional. So, if someone from your district has, someone, any district has a question, they can go to any one, they should be able to go to any one of the representatives, not just the one from their district. It's a, it's an interesting challenge, finding the right people to serve on this, the right balance, and so, but if you remember that it's all regional, it becomes much easier. And, um, I think we end up dividing ourselves into little pockets and getting too siloed when we start saying, well, my district this, my district that, you know, it's all about Calaveras County, so, and the cog is absolutely a regional focus. Thank you.
Any other public comments? We can only have one.
Hi, Justin Catalano, West Point, this agenda item, I believe, is about me. This gentleman over here is claiming that there's no representatives in district three, although Michael Olivera is from district three, and our new alternate member is also from district three, so there is two. He is correct that there is nobody from district one or district five. I also have a lease agreement in district one, so if it was an issue of being in a certain area, I do have a valid lease that shows that I am renting a property in Valley Springs, which is district one, so there should be no concern about misrepresentation. I'm here to represent the entire county, I'm a professional in the transportation industry, the majority of my work experience is in the transportation industry, I worked for New Jersey Transit for a number of years as a supervisor, and I have a formal education from Penn State in the transportation industry. This is why I applied for this position last December, and I will continue to come to the meetings and actively participate in this board, because I am thoroughly interested in transportation, and I am thoroughly interested in the, the benefit of our county, and that's why I applied for this position, and that's why I continue to, um, go for it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Eads, Executive Director with the Calaveras Council of Governments, and the Calaveras Council of Governments supports the appointment of Mr. Justin Cantalano in accordance with the joint powers agreement and the policies and procedures. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, but I do recommend the appointment of Mr. Justin Cantalano.
Any other public comments? I have a question, Melissa. Is there, uh, is there a district two representative now on, on your board?
Currently, we do have a district two representative, Mr. Jim Hemminger. His last meeting with the Calaveras Council of Governments will be the December meeting, and he will no longer be seeking reappointment to the Calaveras Council of Governments as his term will be ending in December.
All right, so, so my, my question is, is would that be a good time to bring on another district two representative?
Actually, if Mr. Justin Cantalano were confirmed today, the December meeting would be his first official meeting.
So, there'd be one meeting?
Absolutely, just one meeting.
With the two?
With the two representatives.
Okay.
Correct. And interestingly enough, the discussion about district representation, I think, is an interesting one, to see how this conversation has changed over the years. Historically, representatives from the districts five, two, and often one advocated for representation on the cog board in terms of corridors. So, there was often a fear that there would be over-representation on the four corridor, and so that the board of supervisors and the city council wanted to make sure that twelve, twenty-six, forty-nine, other areas of the county were also represented.
Is there, uh, is there a position open for, currently?
Currently, I do have, in addition to this position, two new positions that will be vacant after December, and currently, for the two vacant positions, I've received one application.
And what are those positions?
Currently, Mr. John Gomes, the Chair of the Calaveras Council of Governments, his chair, his seat will be up in December. He does have interest in running for that position again, but the process for him to seek reappointment will be the same for new members. We do have Mr. Jim Hemminger up for reappointment, and he has expressed desire not to continue with the cog board.
I have a comment, Mr. Chair. I have some problems with the way the selection process is being currently run. I do have very large concerns about not having representation in district three. I was able to review the videos of the cog meetings and how that selection process took place, and I do have some questions for Ms. E. Would you please approach the microphone? It's my understanding, and please correct me if I'm inaccurate, that applications were submitted back in February and January of this year for those open positions on the citizen board for cog. Is that correct?
So, I do have the timeline, if you're interested in the comprehensive timeline.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Cantalano first contacted the Calaveras Council of Governments with an interest in the position in July two thousand fourteen.
I'm sorry, what day was that?
July two thousand fourteen.
July fourteen?
Correct. At the time, we didn't have a recruitment going, but we notified Mr. Cantalano that our recruitment process would begin in accordance with our policies and procedures in September. Our official recruitment process for the position that Mr. Cantalano applied for began in September of two thousand fourteen.
Ms. E, could you speak a little bit slower?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, it began in September of two thousand fourteen, so we put out public notices, this was on the pine tree, I believe we did legal ads, it was on our website, it was discussed at the cog board meetings, and September two thousand fourteen was the first time the position was advertised. We received two applications, Justin Cantalano and Mr. Rourke Weber, both by the filing deadline of November twenty-first. The December two thousand fourteen meeting, in accordance with our policies and procedures, was the date that both applications were to be considered by the cog board. It was at the December meeting that Mr. Rourke Weber, just minutes prior to the meeting, decided to pull his application for consideration, leaving Mr. Cantalano the only applicant to have filed in time and in accordance with our policies and procedures. It was at that point that the cog board directed staff to go out with another recruitment, and that they wanted applicants for consideration, not just one applicant for consideration. So, we began that recruitment, and it was, let's see, I believe, April, when Mr. Cantalano reapplied, by August two thousand fourteen, we came before the cog board, I'm sorry, two thousand fifteen, with a total of four applications at that point in time. And we left the recruitment ongoing for a matter of months until we can get enough applications for consideration.
So, you received no applications between December fourteen through April fifteen?
We waited until August two thousand fifteen, at which point we can get four total applications. So, we just kept it open for another.
Do you have the dates of those applications?
I do, I can get that information off the top of my head, I feel like it was...
Does February of two thousand fifteen ring a bell?
Um, I do feel like it was February.
Tim Muterties submitted that application?
Correct, I do feel like it was February, March, and I may actually, I do have these bulleted notes, so it, the August two thousand fifteen may not be an accurate date, I do remember it was February and March, we did receive a number of applications, and we, the next time we came back was before the cog board with four, and you are correct, of those four, Ms. Kathy Topol, Mr. Muterties, we had Mr. Rob Williams, and Mr. Justin Cantalano were the four. And this, this might be a mistake, August two thousand fifteen, I believe you're correct, it was February and March when they applied.
Yeah, so we had a total of four applications in, in, in progress, I guess you could call it, from December, period of December, to July?
You are correct, and at which point, we took those before the cog board, they considered three applications, Ms. Kathy Topol withdrew her application because of the length of time it took in recruiting, we wanted to make sure we had a number of applications to take back to the cog board. They considered those three, at which point, they elected to appoint Mr. Cantalano as the citizen member, and they appointed Mr. Muterties as the alternate.
The appointment of Mr. Cantalano, that was in conflict with your bylaws, isn't it?
It was not in conflict with the bylaws, the JPA allows for the appointment of a citizen member that represents a supervisory district to citizen members, but this is part of that process, where I come back before the board of supervisors to seek your approval and ratification of the appointment of the two members from the same supervisory district. So, the cog board was not in conflict at all with the policies and procedures or the joint powers agreement, they are definitely following in suit with those goals identified by both the board of supervisors and the city council.
You are the executive director of cog, I understand?
Yes.
And that is a salary position?
Yes.
Okay. Do you feel that the board made a wise decision in delaying filling these positions?
I am a employee of the Calaveras Council of Governments.
I understand.
And my job is to serve the public's interest, so my personal opinion, I think, is irrelevant in terms of this discussion.
Well, give me your position as, as an employee, as a director.
But I think, from my perspective, my Calaver, the Calaveras Council of Governments choosing to have more applicants apply for consideration, they felt was in the interest of the organization. I support their decision.
Okay. And there hasn't been any district three representation on the board, I am an alternate as a supervisor position, that's correct, is that correct?
I believe you are an alternate, and we do have a citizen member alternate.
Our supervisor position is supervisor Kearney and supervisor Pawnee.
Correct.
Okay.
And interestingly enough, a little history, I think, about the Calaveras Council of Governments, is Michelle Plotnik was the district three representative on the cog board, and I think, along with Mr. Palestine, she was one of the longest-standing citizen members on the cog board since it was formed.
Yeah, but she's not on that board anymore, is she?
No, she is not.
Okay. Just so we're clear, the presence of two citizen members from the same district does not coincide with the bylaws of cog, but the procedure is to bring that situation to the board of, board of supervisors for their approval of that condition, is that correct?
If I might read what the joint powers agreement says specifically. There shall not be two citizen members from the same supervisory district or the City of Angels Camp serving on the cog at the same time unless approved by the member agency's governing body. So, if the governing body, you, the board of supervisors, does not approve the Calaveras Council of Governments' decision to appoint Mr. Cantalano, that action will not hold, and the Calaveras Council of Governments cannot seat him as a citizen member. So, we are following the process that has been outlined by the board of supervisors and the city council in order to seek Justin's appointment.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Could you run down the board makeup force as far as representation and where they're from?
Sure. We have representation from supervisor Pawnee, district four, representation from supervisor Kearney, district five, we have city council members Elaine Morris and Wes Cullum representing the City of Angels Camp, we have Mr. Jim Hemminger from district two, and we have Mr. John Gomes from Copperopolis in district four, and the, the vacant position, which is now being occupied by the newly-appointed alternate from district three, Mr. Muterties.
But that's a temporary assignment pending the results of this particular meeting?
Correct. At which point, if Mr. Cantalano were selected today, he would take that vacant seat that has been vacant for some time, and we would have representation from district two for the December meeting, and the December meeting only, at which point in December, we will be considering the two new vacant seats occupied by Mr. Hemminger and Mr. Gomes.
How many current applications do you have for those two vacancies?
We do have one, right now. I anticipate Mr. Gomes to seek reappointment and submit an application, and I have one other application from Mr. Muterties.
For a permanent position on the cog as a citizen member?
For a permanent position, correct.
So, he's temporarily serving as an alternate until this decision's been made?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. E.
Any, uh, public comments on this?
Bill McManus, district three, a couple of things trouble me, first of all, the concept of cog just being a regional, um, board or whatever, and we've been through this, I don't know how many times, in the thirty-five years I've been up here, trying to explain the problems of snow removal to people that live at sea level, and they're trying to explain their problems, star thistle eradication, you know, to us up the hill. You know, just like this country runs with fifty states, the federal government has things to do, but we all have representation there, we all have unique things within our jurisdictions. There are small problems, there are large problems, you need to get your problem up in front of the board for, or the, whatever commission, whatever, to get that consideration. You're not always going to win, but at least you have an avenue to bring your concerns to the, the body that's going to make the determination. The other thing that troubles me, and I, I don't think I quite understand it, is if application, if applicants come before the cog and then they end up at the board of supervisors or someplace else, and everyone has got all this bruhaha about it, and we find that there's an imbalance, um, if one of the applicants says, well, to heck with it, I've got an address at, on the other side of the county, I'll just jump over there and use that address, and you can appoint me from a different district. That would be the same as perhaps a, a board member running for reelection. You find out that you're, you're trailing, your campaign is in trouble, and you happen to own property on the other side of the county, and you can go run over there and maybe have a better chance. I think that's illegal, but, I don't know, you've got county... I think that's illegal, but, I don't know, you've got County Council here, she can probably tell you that, but it certainly seems improper and almost kind of shocking that people can just claim whatever district they want as their home district to kind of get on the Board and avoid some of the bylaws or rules or whatever that were put there to protect the integrity of the COG. So anyway, if there's an answer to that one, I'd like to know. Thank you.
Justin Catalano, West Point. I would like to comment on that. I only use that as a reference just to show that I could have applied in District One, and we wouldn't even be at this point today. We've been spending a lot of time on this discussion, and I only made a reference to that just because it's a point that I could have done, but I am staying in West Point. Also, the snow removal thing, living in the mountains and on the ground. Fortunately for me in the county, I grew up in New Jersey, and we have four seasons, so I'm very experienced in snow removal and water removal and any other type of situation that arises when it comes to transportation, because that is what I studied, and that is what I enjoy. You know, there's another factor, if I don't get appointed, there's going to be three vacant seats on that COG Board. And, you know, obviously, if we were looking for a particular individual from a particular district, maybe that should be part of the criteria that we put on the website when we're looking for applicants. And maybe the criteria should be a little more specific so that we don't have a situation where we're spending time on an issue that's kind of irrelevant. If an individual's not doing a good job on a Board, it's very easy to just vote them off, and being that there's time limits, they're only going to be there for a certain amount of time. And speaking of time, being that I've been attending the COG Board meetings since December, I am very up to date on the different projects that are going along. I'm a young man, and so if I am elected to this Board, I will be able to do my best to stick around and plan and get funding for this, for transportation projects and programs, and see them till they're completed. And that's it. Thank you.
I don't mean to be a know-it-all, I seem to have something to say about everything, but I know the difficulty in finding volunteers to sit on these commissions. And I think we create too many obstacles in inviting and welcoming people to sit on these commissions. I think we need to do everything we can to fill the seats, because the more advice any of us, but you especially, can get, the better decisions we're all going to make. So I think it's, I'm just wondering why, you know, if you don't have representation in your district, you need to put your money where your mouth is and find someone to step up. If you don't have anyone, God bless the people that are willing to come and fill in for those vacancies, because it's not, I mean, you don't get accolades for sitting on these committees. It's rough work, you spend your time and money and energy and use your expertise to try and come to conclusions, and we need to celebrate the people that are willing to sacrifice, because that's what it is, the sacrifice. As you folks know, in your positions, you sacrifice a lot of your own personal for the betterment of the community or the betterment of your entire county. And I like the idea that people are representing the entire county, just rather than one specific area, because then we get into little nitpicking, me, 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 and you kind of aspects there. So, thank you for listening.
I'm Peter Ray from the Fifth District. I grew up in Chicago, and besides snow and ice, there was a lot of moving equipment, done a lot of things moved in Chicago. And folks, you guys are saint, Comptess County. I don't want to knock Zicani. I can bring up old issues from a couple of years back, okay? But roads, so I'm not going to knock it. But, it is quite clear on page 92 that you folks can make an exception over here, member agency's governing body. Why do you have rules and regulation if you have an option to say, "Screw it, I like this other way better"? So, yes, we have different interests, but you know what? Whatever our interest is, we all end up paying for it, and that's what our interest. Every one of us residents of this county will end up paying for it, one way or another. So yes, we do have a stake in this deal. Every one of the districts, because you still got the constituents, I like to say unfortunately sometime, but yes, everybody's paying for this, not just one district or two districts, or we need a couple more representatives to favor a certain district. We've been through with it with the previous boards, folks. It's time to change. Let's get this thing straight. And if it's difficult to come to an agreement, tough luck. That's why elected officials get, let's just put it this way, you're your keep, you've got my sympathy, but that's why you've got five different directors. Thank you.
Rosemary Wilson from McCullough Hill, that yes, it is in District Two. I'm not sure, but I think I find myself agreeing with Peter again, and that's only ever happened once before. Maybe it's because I lived outside of Chicago for a year when I first came to the US and lived for about four years or four winters in Boston, where of course they have snow. I haven't seen this gentleman before, but heavens, are we debating and wanting to consider turning down a Penn State graduate in transportation in Calaveras County? Where we, and a young man who is not part of the, well, we're all aging, but don't you think it would be good to have some fresh blood, to see what they do on the East Coast? And I just, I just think that you should seize the opportunity and use talent when you see them. Otherwise, you might find yourself, dare I say, hiring a consultant. Bye.
Any other public comments?
So, I got-
Go ahead.
Just a quick question from Melissa. If we decided to, it seems to be a point of contention to have two District Two reps on there at the same time, and, you know, I don't think, I think it's, I think everything's kind of being a little bit blown out of proportion, but, you know, definitely want to see things move forward and willing to compromise on this. I have no, I have nothing, I have no back, I have been doing nothing on the background of this, you know. I've never talked to Justin outside of this room, and I don't know the other District Two rep either. It's not me trying to stack the COG Board, that's for certain. And so what I was thinking is, maybe we just, you know, I want to make sure that an individual who comes, like the guy who is in your district is appointed, and I want to make sure Justin is on there as well. They both seem like very qualified individuals. I also, but I just wanted to ask you, can we just, could we just vote today to appoint him in January? So he takes seat on January, and I don't know if Justin's okay with that, I have to make sure he's all right with that, but I mean, that would be my first take, would be that way. Nobody's maybe upset about having two District Two folks? Is that technically possible?
I believe that would be the discretion of this Board.
I would have issue with that. I'll be quite honest with you.
Actually, we have multiple applications.
But I mean, he's, but he's already been approved by the COG, right?
Hasn't been approved by the Board.
But I mean, but what I'm saying is-
The COG has come to the Board of Supervisors, per their bylaws, for our acceptance of their proposal.
Well, what I'm saying is, the COG has already approved and vetted Justin twice, and so as reaching out to you to make a compromise here and say, "Don't, that way we don't have two members of District Two, because our District Two guys retired, and so we just appoint him starting in January. That way we only have one District Two guy, and your guy can fill that seat in January as well. That way we both are happy."
Let me, can I jump in and maybe solve this a little bit? Because I am on COG and know the bylaws a little bit. The only reason this is here is because there are two people, this would be the second representative from the same district. So COG does recognize when there is, you know, two people from the same district, then it goes to the Board of Supervisors for approval. If there was not, in January, it wouldn't be an issue, and COG could vote him right in, and he would take the seat. He would not come to the Board.
You are correct.
So basically, we're struggling over something that, I mean, in January, with the other person from District Two saying, "Thank you, I'm going to go do other things," the COG Board could vote Justin in, and it would actually be fairly invisible to the Board of Supervisors. So that would, that's, I don't believe we can even do that today here, according to the bylaws.
I have not, I have not reviewed the COG's bylaws, but from what, I mean, generally speaking, what is before the Board today is essentially ratifying what the Board, the COG Board is asking for, and that is to have two representatives from one district. It appears that that would only be for one meeting, because after that, the other representative is no longer going to be on the Board. So this process of ratifying would not have to take place come January. You could ratify the decision today to appoint him effective January 1. That would certainly be fine, because you are ratifying the decision in this year when there is two people in District Two. If, for instance, this were, you were to ask to continue this until January 1 to consider it, then that that would not be appropriate, because there would only be one member from District Two on the COG Board at that point. But as long as there's two members on the COG Board, this Board has the ability to ratify the request of the COG Board to have two members from District Two.
With all due respect, Counsel, we're making decisions that's going to happen in January, and we're only in October. What's going to prevent somebody from bringing in more applications from different districts? I think that we ought to act on this particular issue and let the COG Board decide after January 1, who's going to be on that Board at that time. Give the COG a chance to operate within its bylaws. Once again, I think, kind of putting the cart before the horse, we don't know if these folks are electing not to run for their positions, they say they have, but things change. We've seen that happen. We've seen people put in more applications. I've received more inquiries about membership on the COG, and you can expect more applications. I don't think we can make that decision at this time for the first year. I do have a couple of quick questions, Ms. Eadie, if I could take the time to do that. Can you tell me briefly the requirements of a citizen member-
Yes.
-to sit on the COG? I want to talk about residency.
The criteria for citizen member selection, one, the citizen member shall be resident of Calaveras County or the City of Angels Camp, and two, there shall not be two citizen members from the same supervisory district or the City of Angels Camp serving on the COG at the same time unless approved by the member agency's governing board.
Okay, can you define residency for me?
It is not defined.
Not defined at all?
Not defined.
Is there any assumption of residency, say, for a candidate for the Board of Supervisors, what that requirement is?
I'm not aware of that requirement, and the COG, the only way that we verify the requirement is in the application, where the applicant lists their address.
All right, does it say anything about renting or leasing?
Does not.
Okay. Counsel, do we have any input on this?
I'm sorry, are you asking about the Board or about the COG Board?
About the COG Board.
The COG Board would follow their bylaws.
Okay, so there's no, there's actually no addressing that in their bylaws that I could see. Did you see that?
Again, I didn't, I didn't review, I was not provided a copy of the COG bylaws for any specific questions, I'm just answering general governance questions, as far as my understanding of it. But if the COG, you would follow the COG bylaws as far as residency. If it's silent, then there wouldn't be requirements as far as how long somebody was a resident of that district in order to qualify for a citizen member, as long as, for instance, the situation, if there is more than one person in that district, they would have to come to the Board to get that decision ratified.
Thank you, Counsel. Ms. Eadie, just for the benefit of our audience, sharing an audience on public access TV, what does the COG do?
The COG is the-
In five seconds.
Okay, I'll do my best. The COG is the regional transportation planning agency for the City of Angels and the County of Calaveras. So interestingly enough, at this level, there's a lot of talk about district representation. But when you go before the Calaveras Council of Governments, we are making regional transportation decisions on behalf of the city and the county with a very limited amount of money. So the responsibility of the COG Board is to prioritize those investments. I think, for me, what's most interesting in the last four years and the way that we've organized the structure of the Calaveras Council of Governments, is that all of the funding decisions and prioritization of projects work their way up first through the City Council and the Board of Supervisors. COG does not consider a project that has not been approved by our member agencies' governing boards. So that is where citizens have representation, is each and every project before it goes before myself and the Technical Advisory Committee, which is your Public Works Director, your Planning Director, and also the City Public Works Director and Planning Director, have been brought before you as priority projects, because you can imagine amongst yourselves, you all have a number of competing projects competing for the same amount of money. We layer the City of Angels Camp, and the equation gets that much more complicated. So the Calaveras Council of Governments has the responsibility of really ranking, prioritizing, and funding the regional priorities that have been brought before us as approved by the Board of Supervisors and the City Council.
So COG is like a clearinghouse, if you will, providing the funding for projects that are brought before you, submitted by County Public Works and City of Angels Public Works, correct?
Well, where the COG does have jurisdiction authority is we set the criteria and the prioritization for those projects. So oftentimes, for example, I may get $22 million in project requests from the County of Calaveras, I may have $2 million to spend. We may get similar requests from the City of Angels. And how do we prioritize those limited dollars becomes the responsibility of the COG. But those priorities have been brought to us as set by your governing board. So for example, a question that I just received the other day, we have the Arnold Mobility Plan, which is a plan that the Calaveras Council of Governments, a planning document, because that's one of our core functions, is regional planning for both highways, sidewalks, main streets, transit. But that was a plan that I believe the COG had funded in 2007. So an interested member of the community, and this is often the case, comes to me and says, "How do we get those sidewalks funded? I want that sidewalk funded in downtown Arnold." So we say, "You should go talk to your- So we say, "You should go talk to your Calaveras County Public Works Director. Let the county, let your supervisor know that's a priority for you." Every three years, we do a call for projects, at which point we will solicit applications from the city and county. It'll be based on a criteria that technical staff can evaluate to find out which are the most competitive. Because we have a small pot of money. Our goal is not to advance political priorities. Our goal is to advance the most competitive regional priorities. Because our projects have to compete at a statewide and a regional level. So if we're just trying to advance local political priorities, we won't fund anything. I need the capacity to have competitive projects to leverage dollars. That's what we're doing with the State Route 4 wagon trail. But my direction to them is when it comes to project implementation and capital projects, that's the jurisdiction of the City of Angels and the Board of Supervisors. The COG can't make those decisions on priorities at that level because that may conflict with Public Works priorities that are existing. And I wouldn't want to give the false hope that a community project could be built when there are already competing demands on your staff that they're considering already.
So that project, the Arnold Mobility Plan, has not been implemented since 2007?
The plan, I'm not even sure, was approved by the County Board of Supervisors. It was adopted by the Calaveras Council of Governments. It exists, from what I understand, as, as a community vision, as several of the mobility plans do. But as far as I know, there has not been momentum from the county in a number of years to advance a project from that plan.
How many projects has Angels Camp completed in the last five years?
I could go through our capital improvement program.
Yes.
And I would have to take a look. But in terms of our call for projects that we typically do, I remember the first round, the city usually competes for about 20 to 30% of the total overall funding that we make available. What the city has been very, very successful in doing is mobilizing consensus for priority projects. So they start with the planning phases and they're continuing those priorities through implementation. So I think in the last four years, this is where I've seen the city be very, very successful. They unite on a priority. For example, the Angels Creek Master Trail and Playo Trails. They applied for planning dollars through the COG. They received those planning dollars and now they are working towards implementation of the projects identified in those plans. And they are really in a great position to compete on a state and federal level because active transportation is where the majority of those dollars are going. So they were able to bring the community together. That's another thing the Calaveras Council of Governments looks for, is knowing that there's consensus. When we have divided jurisdictions and divided communities, that's not a project we really want to get behind because we could be throwing good dollars after bad. We might not get through the environmental process. We might end up with a no-build alternative, in which case it wasn't a good investment of our regional dollars. So what the city's doing is they're bringing communities together. They're building consensus and support for projects, which makes them prime not only for our regional dollars, but state and federal dollars. They do have now 1.1 million in CMAC money that they are using to advance the Angels Creek Trails and Master Plan through environmental and design phase. Then the goal would be, we compete for state and federal dollars for construction. They have also sought funding for the Gateway Corridor Study, which is another planning document. So the COG often were the regional planning agency. So project delivery and construction is not what I do. That's what Caltrans and your Public Works Department does. We do regional planning documents and we prioritize the investment of those limited funds. I think that the city has done a really good job in lining up plans. From there, they're gonna go into project study reports, which are what you need to move into the next phase of project delivery. And at that point, other than funding, that's where the COG pushes themselves back from the table and it's up to the jurisdictions to construct those projects.
The wagon trail project is part of that, the COG operations also, right?
Correct. So wagon trail is the number one regional project and has been for a number of years. We, when we talk about leveraging state and federal funding, that's sort of the name of our game. We've used 250 of our regional improvement shares, which are the dollars that come to us locally. And then we leveraged an additional $2 million in federal earmarks to help us deliver the environmental phase of State Route 4 wagon trail. We've worked with your County Public Works Department and the wagon trail project delivery team, including Caltrans, and we are bringing forward our 2016 RTIP to program additional funding, almost $6.8 million in design and right-of-way. And our goal is working with Caltrans and Caltrans has already submitted a pilot project grant application on our behalf. And the goal is for us to get a construction-ready project as close to the finish line as we possibly can so that we are competitive for state and federal dollars to come down and construct these projects.
What is the estimated value of that project as far as completion? Is it 10, 10 million plus?
The total project, depending on the alternatives, I believe were about near $60 million total project cost. The Calaveras Council of Governments with your project team and our project managers, who are the, the County Public Works Department, and just for history on that, the Calaveras Council of Governments was the lead agency. In 2011, we transferred that responsibility to the County Public Works Department. When I talk about the COG being the planning agency and doing the prioritization of funding and not project implementation, that's really where we drew the line. And we rely on your staff to have the expertise for project delivery and prioritization of those, those capital projects. So in 2011, we transferred project management over to the County Public Works Department. They will be leading all subsequent phases.
How many projects have you had in District Four in the last five years?
That would be difficult to say because of the City of Angels Camp submits applications on behalf of the City of Angels Camp. I could go back and see if the county has submitted any applications on behalf of District Four. I'm not aware. I would have to take a look at our call for projects. And the way that that process works is we make available a pot of money. We identify a scoring and an evaluation criteria. The local jurisdictions go to their governing boards. They prioritize projects. So there's always a number even within the city of competing demands for a very small amount of money. That comes before the COG board.
So I'd like to get to the point so that we can get to deciding on the appointment, actually. If we can, so can you get to your, where are you going here with this, Mike?
I just want to see what kind of projects are being funded through COG throughout the entire county? Like District One, District Two, District Four, District Five. Do you have any information on that?
I do, because your staff provides me with a staff memo and a board resolution and their top 20 to 30 projects. So I could prioritize that list and provide it to you, yes. Would you like that I provide it to the CIO's office?
So my interest is, where's the money go? The majority of the money go? And because I, I constantly ask and battle for projects in District One. I know that Steve probably feels the same way, Chris, we all do. And so, you know, and a lot of times, I've always, and I've stated publicly that I felt that I didn't want to feel this way, but I felt like we were in competition with a greater number of votes. And that's why it's, I think it's important to balance out that board and to make sure that we all get represented equally based on what the, what the priorities are, actually.
So you are correct. The competition is here amongst each of you in your individual districts. The county, as I said, gave me more than 20 projects in a call for projects worth tens of millions of dollars. I had $2 million to spend. The goal of the Regional Transportation Planning Agency is not to rank or consider individual districts or the city versus the county. And actually, I think that that's where we've been successful in the last few years. It's to facilitate and negotiate sort of the win-win on behalf where there's commonalities between the city or county. Otherwise, we'll be stonewalled and nothing will get funded. Because everybody would want to advance the, the goals and objectives of their own individual districts. The COG identifies a criteria and has the priority of leveraging funds and identifying the most competitive projects. You're not only competing amongst yourself and the city, you're competing against the rest of the state for very limited funds.
But on this particular agenda item, I think that the question is, and the concern is, is that we have equal representation in each district. And that is what we're, that's what we're doing here, so.
Chair, may I comment?
Yes.
So, you know, I just don't know what to think sometimes in today's, one of those days. The COG board went through a transformation several years ago because of this very issue to where the old COG and how that was set up was very district-oriented. And that's where the bickering went on for many, many years. And Calaveras County suffered because of that bickering. In fact, there was a, a time where an olive branch was extended in this very boardroom to take a look at COG and redesign it because of this bickering that was going on and nothing was getting done. So in the reorganization, it was the four elected officials that serve on a COG board and three public members and an alternate public member. Through the process, it has never meant to be district-oriented representation from the community. Through this process, it was understood that if there happened to be two, three members of the public serving from one district, it had to be vetted out by the respective boards, in this case, the Board of Supervisors. Keep in mind, so many times, people think that the COG makes a decision as to what project will be first on the list. That is not true. Each and every project that gets delivered here in Calaveras County, and God forbid, they're limited in the big picture, comes before this board. We, as a board, sat here and looked at the 20-plus million-dollar projects that Public Works brought before our board. We are the ones as a board that prioritize those projects and sent that forward. So each one of us, and granted, we had two new members who weren't in that process, but you will be soon, had a chance to hear all of the various projects that Public Works put together based on us as individual board members discussing with our Public Works Director what was necessary, what was needed, what was wanted in our districts. That information came forward and we, as a board, voted on what that priority was. It was a vote. And it was a 5-0 vote. Our projects are very limited. I think in Calaveras County, there were three or four projects. Then that information goes before COG. COG then is that planning agency. They go after the dollars. They're not sitting here saying, "Well, it's District Four, we're, yeah, we're gonna do this project." Or, you know, "It's District One and we're gonna do this project." They look at the dollars, they look at the regional value. They take all of our individual, our list from this board that was approved upon on a 5-0 vote and said, "This is the, this is the project and now we're gonna seek out this funding." And that's what the COG board is doing, constantly seeking out funding sources to support our transportation projects in addition to transit. Now, we as a board suffer, and I've been here for three years and it's been a three-year suffer trying to get community people to serve on our various boards. We have had a gentleman for the last year who continues to participate in this process. I have no idea, I have no personal knowledge of this gentleman except when he's come before here and has been interviewed by the boards. And the COG board endorsed his, his participation. And we're sitting here dickering over about this district and that district and so on and so forth. If you want to dicker, the time to dicker is when we bring these projects before us to fight about as to what we want to prioritize to send on to COG. There's been so many interesting questions about COG that I encourage all of you to come to a COG meeting and listen. I encourage you to meet with our COG Executive Director and find out a little bit more how this works. But it's very difficult to serve on these boards when you don't have full membership capacity. And I could go on and on about the list of boards that we still have openings for. Fish and Game, excuse me, not Fish and Game, Park and Rec is one. I wish we spent that much time dickering about Park and Rec that we are on this one.
And when we get 20 million, we can do that.
Well, it doesn't really matter about the money and I could debate that one with you too.
Yeah, I understand.
All right, so I think it's very important as we look at these projects, each one of these projects for transportation comes before this board. The COG board is not saying, "Yes, we like this project or yes, we like that one better." So all of our COG members, whether they're community members or board members, have the ear and the attention, or should have, of our board members here to say yea or nay to whatever it is that we might be doing at the COG level. We will have opportunities. I think after this viewing, I'm not quite sure if anyone is gonna put their name into the hat. This has been going on for one year, one year. And the COG board has endorsed this. Yes, we waited for a period of time because the COG board, not Melissa Eads as the Executive Director, the COG board said, "We'd like to have three or four applicants to interview." We didn't want to interview just one applicant for one position. We wanted to have more. So she followed our orders. She got three, four applicants and in the end, it was three applicants. And all three were interviewed in a public, very public process. And the COG board made the decision to have Justin as the permanent member and Tim as the alternate. So I encourage my counterparts to wholeheartedly endorse what COG is asking us to do. And that is to bring Justin onboard as the member.
Okay, so any other public comments?
Vicki Rainkey, thank you, Debbie, for all the clarification. I was gonna get up before Debbie started to speak to say that the item on the agenda, obviously, is just about an appointment. And a lot of other questions were coming up that were very interesting to learn. So I was just gonna recommend that maybe this needs to be an agendized item as far as what COG does and for the public to understand that. Because I realize that this meeting was not agendized to talk about that. So that was kind of gonna be my comment because I think COG is an important issue that people need to understand. But obviously, today, you're looking to say whether you're going to appoint somebody and I don't really have a comment on that, so thanks.
Short comment. I'm Peter Race from the 5th District. Like to point out, these folks work really hard. I believe there's three or four directors over there. They work hard enough to have, three of whom, I believe, the one who mitigate and what you call got administered the whole thing. It costs the taxpayers over $300,000 in salary plus benefits. I, as a member of the 5th District, folks, other than ideological benefits that they wanted to impress upon the 5th District, and it goes back a year, I'm not gonna blame this lady, there's been some changes. But the 5th District, I think slightly shortchanged by COG. And I know it's politics, but it's a very expensive, very expensive and not very functional politics. By the time you finish with all these administrative costs plus benefit, we're looking at about half, close to $500,000. And this is not for your benefits information, or most of these folks, because most of these folks have their minds made up. I'm talking those folks out in the, out in the camera. When you're talking about your money road funds, just to mitigate it and administer it, it costs you, I'll probably buy about half a million dollars. Thank you. Thank you.
Melissa Eads, Executive Director, Calaveras Council of Governments. In short, I was asked some very specific technical questions about percentages, amounts of money. So, what I would like to do is send a letter to the county CAO's correspondence for the public and the board on the percentage of money the city receives, the prioritized list from the city and the county, the total amount the COG has made available in our past call for projects, the total amount allocated, and also, Mr. Olivera, because of my mistake on the schedule of events, I'd like to go back through that, revise the schedule of events, and make that public information as well. If I've missed anything that I was not able to provide you guys with answers, please send me an email. I'd be happy to include it as correspondence to your CAO.
Thank you, Ms. Eads.
Bill McManus again. I think when we, we talk about the bylaws, and there's even a mention about the number of representatives that can be from a district, I think the intent is pretty clear, it's a district, district-centric kind of organization. If there was going to be some sort of regional complexion put on it, you'd probably have, excuse me, at-large members that just float around the county and, you know, could be on, be on a board. But since, since they do reference district, I think that's what the COG is trying to do, or should be doing, is making sure that, as best as possible, there's representation from the various districts, because they're going to take their recommendations to the board, which, you know, you all represent districts, so I, I think it's a good matchup. Another quick question I had, as we've, just, gee, it seems like every issue that comes up just has an endless lifespan, but when this first came up at a Board of Supervisors meeting, Supervisor Olivera was absent. Then, we were trying to get permission to do this, that permission failed to gain a majority. So, Supervisor Olivera, at the next meeting that he was at, since it's his option, called for reconsideration of this, and it's gonna be brought forward and discussed and so forth and so on, but it was, it was part of, part of the agenda. Somewhere between then and now, this item shows up on the consent agenda, which, considering that we've been talking about this thing for almost an hour, I thought the consent agenda was supposed to be routine and non-controversial. This hardly seems to be routine, and it hardly seems to be non-controversial. Now, who in their right mind would put this item on the consent agenda? I mean, I don't know, I don't know, I, I don't know what the, I don't know who runs the equipment behind the curtain in the Emerald City. Someone is coming up with an agenda. Someone decided that Supervisor Olivera's motion to reconsider should have been on the consent agenda and not the regular agenda. So, I am asking, who put this on the consent agenda, and could you please tell me why?
It was a mistake.
Oh, okay. I appreciate that answer.
It was, it was actually two mistakes, because, one, it was mistakenly put on there, and, two, I mistakenly didn't put it on the regular agenda during agenda review, so that was also my fault.
Mistake twice times?
That's what happens sometimes, you know, it just kinda...
I wanna thank you guys, guys. Thank you very much.
House of Taxpayer Association. I understand that the only people that don't make mistakes are people that don't do anything. So, making mistakes indicates that you're doing something, which is a good thing. I wonder if there's an 800-pound gorilla in the room that we're not looking at? Our Taxpayer Association is concerned with, with county government. We want good government, and we want our taxes to be reasonable, and preferably low. And we have a problem over recent years with this concept of regional, regional government. This is where new forms of government are set up to supplant, and we're parallel with, and sometimes replace, local government. The problem when doing this is representation. We feel, the Taxpayer Association, really comfortable with the county structure being run by the Board of Supervisors, who we elect. There's good communication there, we don't always agree, but we feel comfortable with that concept. And as far as planning roads, there, there seems to be two different types. One is county, county roads, and the other one is state highways. And they're, they're probably, in the case of state highways, they're good function for organizations such as COG. They did a good job on the bypass of Sonora, I think they did. They, they were within budget or below budget and, and finished the job ahead of schedule. To me, that's a success. Also, Melissa Eads is a fantastic administrator, so we're not talking about any problems with administration of COG. We, we're kind of concerned a little bit with the concept of supplanting local government with, with the regional government. And there is areas in the Bay Area where it's really contentious there, where the local, the local voters, taxpayers are, are really upset about what's happening in, with regional government. So, to make a long story short, what may be of concern to those on the Board of Supervisors that have an ideological orientation regarding that subject, who gets, who gets appointed to go to COG and make all the difference in the world as far as protecting constitutional rights and property rights, which is what our taxpayers really advocates? So, I don't have a slice idea about, about the orientation of the candidates, but I suspect that maybe the 800-pound gorilla in the room is the future direction of COG. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Good, okay, so, I'd like to make my recommendation. Melissa, could I ask you one more question, please? I hate to keep pushing this on, but I just wanted to come to an end. So, right now, Tim is, Tim Muretis, right?
Correct.
Is the alternate?
Correct.
For COG, so that's District Three?
Correct.
And as an alternate, he's, he's filling what place?
He's filling the seat that's been vacant for over a year.
Okay, so, there's been a seat vacant for over a year, so you're actually running in full committee?
We, we currently do have him filling that seat, however, in the case of last month, where I had my District Two public member alternate, I have a vacant seat, because, no, I don't have my alternate, so...
Because of the fire, right?
We have been vacant a seat for the past year.
Sure, but you have, you've had somebody to sit in on that?
Just recently, with Mr. Muretis' appointment in August.
Okay.
So, for September, October, I did not have a full board. I had a citizen member absent.
Right, right.
So, one month, we did have a full board.
And Mr. Muretis is also, I mean, the COG Board chose him to, to be able to do that?
Correct.
Okay, so, so, I mean, to get past this whole thing, I mean, I actually like Justin, Why couldn't we appoint or ask COG to consider Tim for the, for that, that seat, and then in January, just recommend that COG put Tim into that, that position for when Jim leaves?
We did a public member recruitment for the application that Mr. Conlon-Tolano presented. We closed that. We only accepted applications received and filed by the date set by the, the COG Board. So, with that process closed, they made the decision that Mr. Muretis be the alternate. If he's interested in a, in a vacant seat, should Mr. Conlon-Tolano not be appointed by the Board of Supervisors, we would just make that vacant seat available with this new recruitment process, they would have to apply. So, it's been the past practice of the COG, that just because you're alternate doesn't automatically grant you a seat on the board, you have to apply, just as everyone else. In the case of John Gomes, as our current chair, if he's interested in a seat that becomes vacant, he also has to reapply. So, the COG Board doesn't just put people in, we go through a new application process.
Well, I guess, I guess my suggestion just wouldn't work, would it? It seems like the easy way out, apparently.
Yeah, I, I understand the process, and I, I have to agree with Ms. Eads. It's an election process, it's a betting process, bylaws, and I, I, I see no way that you can circumvent that.
I, I mean, I understand, I think, you know, it's unfortunate that Justin has, you know, is basically caught up in this larger discussion. You know, obviously, he's put in the commitment and the time, energy of a volunteer representative, just like so many others throughout the community, and, and the problem we have is that there's not enough money, and the system is not working well enough to provide enough transportation dollars throughout the county. I mean, I think that's the, the core of the problem, and so, and I, and I know that then, there's a lot of maneuvering that goes on and a lot of, of thoughts on the whole process, but I would just hate to see him punished for a problem that really is much larger than this representative choice, you know? I don't think if, if it was Tim in this position, I would be 100, anybody who you brought up, who, who was vetted by the COG Board, I would be 100% behind, and I just think that we should, we should, you know, we should respect his, his work and realize it's a bigger problem, and, and vote him on, okay, the, the COG's decision today, so he can, you know, be officially confirmed, so. And I know it's hard to, to set that aside because of the other issues, but I would just hope you guys could, you know, be willing to, to do that today, and, just because, mostly because of his efforts as a, as an individual. So, that's my, excuse us.
Supervisor Wright, I recognize Mr. Conlon-Tolano's efforts, but then again, we have a procedure, we have bylaws, we have to run by those. I would encourage Mr. Conlon-Tolano to seek a position in 30 days on the board through our process in COG, but at this time, I'd like to make a motion. Mr. Chair? Okay. I move that we not approve the appointment of Mr. Conlon-Tolano at this time to the COG Board.
Can we approve the appointment in January?
Before, I wanna ask Melissa something before that goes any further. I don't have my calendar with me. Oh, I do, I guess I could've looked it up. We, we have a November meeting and a December meeting? This sounds like the cheap way out, but what if we tabled this till the very first meeting in January? You can't do that?
Well, like we had previously discussed, if, if the current seated District Two representative does not elect to, to be reappointed, there will not be this issue where there would be two people from District Two. If there isn't this situation where there would be two people from District Two, this issue wouldn't even come to the board.
Right, I understand that.
This would be handled at the COG, not, not the Board of Supervisors.
I second Mike's motion.
Okay, so, we have a motion by Supervisor Olivera. Before we do that, my, I mean, my wish is that, that Justin gets on that board, because I think he's a valuable person. But my wish is also that, that he would be, when, 'cause I know Jim is gonna not take that position, you know, or re-up on it. I would like to see him take Jim's, that place of Jim, because he's...
But that's not...
Jim is very, very valuable, and, and Justin seems to be very, very knowledgeable and, and, you know, a great candidate, so, that's, that's how I feel about it, and I, I think that if we, so, so if we were to be able to ask that he be appointed in place of Jim when Jim leaves, then he's gonna get the position.
That's superseding who might be applying. That's already prejudging. The application period is open. We have one applicant. Now, we're telling everybody, "Well, screw it, don't apply, because, you know, we're waiting for Justin."
I agree with Supervisor Ponte.
That's not fair.
I, I do have one question. Ms. Eads, could I have you approach one more time? By the way, Ms. Eads, I think you're doing a fine job. This was nothing for a... Ms. Eads? I'm sorry, Mrs. Eads, Ms. Eads.
You can call me Melissa.
Can I call you Melinda? Okay, you can call me Mike.
Melissa, okay.
If Mr. Conlon-Tolano was appointed as an alternate... No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't affect it.
It wouldn't. So, I think the options that we do have before us, I, I believe Mr. Kearney did set the record straight, we have a meeting in November, which, in my mind, we've prepared for, and it's already passed, sorry, it hasn't, the meeting in November and December, whereby, if he were confirmed here today, I would have two members from District Two on the board for those two meetings. I do have, at this point in time, three vacant positions, with actually one application in my file. I support Supervisor Wright's recommendation to approve his appointment with an effective date of the first meeting in February, which was in the COG does meet after January recess. I definitely support that recommendation. Or, if he is not approved and supported by the Board of Supervisors today, Mr. Conlon-Tolano could submit an application by my November 20th deadline and apply for a seat and be reconsidered by the Calaveras Council of Governments again. I think, from my perspective, that would be putting the Calaveras Council of Governments in a very difficult situation, because they would feel the applicant does not have your support. So, I think that that is a possibility, but I think, from a political perspective, the COG Board would feel that that was a difficult political decision, not having your support, and not only once, but twice, for the applicant. So, I think those are options, but I just wish that you would know that the full ramifications, because really, we do take a lot of our, our direction from our member agencies.
Sure, so, I just wanna make something clear. It's not that I don't support Justin, 'cause I do, but I also support my, my peer up here and his representation in District Three, and so, that's my dilemma. I like this young man, I've met him many times, and talked to him many times, and I think he's very bright. I think he'd be great for COG. But I also, I also know that there are a number of folks in District Three that feel underrepresented, and there is a reason for this, whether I, you know, why do we have an hour discussion if there's no reason for it? So, the idea here is maybe to get past, figure out why this is happening, and fix it.
And I think for, for this discussion, then, Supervisor Wright's recommendation to confirm his appointment in conformance with the JPA and policies and procedures with an appointment date of the first meeting in February would be a good recommendation.
Can, can you table that motion, and I'll make that other motion?
Once again, my concern is, is the process.
Right.
And do we appoint somebody in October for taking place, taking seat in February? Can't we do that?
I'd like to appoint, I'd like to appoint him today to, to take the seat he's been serving for the last year indirectly.
I, I, I can't go with that.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it is... But we're punishing him.
I under, I, I don't, I don't see it as punishment, I see it as, as process.
It's not, it's not a process that's fair. If you put yourself in his shoes, what would... If you put yourself in his shoes, what would, what would you think?
I have a responsibility to people that put me in this seat.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying...
I need to respond, I need to respond to their wishes.
If you say it's fair, right, this is a fair process, then I ask you, if you were in his position, would you consider this a fair process?
I'm not in his position, I'm in a position of people that voted me in this...
But you just said it was a fair process.
I'm, I'm, could be a fair process, but bottom line is...
It doesn't sound like it.
I have a responsibility to, to my constituents.
No, it needs to be fair for the entire board. It needs to be a fair process. So how do we, how do we get past this? We know, we know, you know, that, that we're really, really like Justin.
I think there's a motion on the floor in a second.
I was gonna say, thank you Supervisor Pante.
All right, so there's a motion by Supervisor Olivera to not approve. Second by Supervisor Kearney to not approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. So we'll take a five-minute break. Yeah, it's getting a good... All right, so we're on to item number seventeen and Bonnie pulled this one.
Thank you. I like to pull this item every year because we could just very easily go over it and not discuss the very important services and let the community be aware of what Victim Witness does. To me, it's one of the most cost-effective programs in the county. The present administrator or director of the program has been working in this position for thirty-one years. Started over in Amador County when Calaveras wasn't progressive enough to open up a victim witness program in our county and served our county until we actually hired her in Calaveras. She's been with this program thirty-one years. She barely makes twenty-five bucks an hour. What other agency do you know that serves over six hundred clients a year on an ongoing basis, sometimes with a part-time staff? This year, I believe she's asking for a full-time staff and I picked her brain before I came up here because usually I make her explain all this herself. For twenty-five bucks an hour, I mean, this is incredible. I'm comparing it to another program I know of that has two employees where the administrator's making forty bucks an hour and does not serve six hundred clients and has only been with the county for twelve years. So I, I asked her, you know, what kind of services? And she knows much better than me that they provide assistance with victims of crime. And I, let me see if I wrote it down, anything else? There's a number that I don't know what I wrote down for, but, oh, she's only asked, her budget's a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars a year to serve three hundred clients. Anyway, I'd like to have a little explanation of some of those services. Thank you.
So it was three hundred, six hundred clients, Bonnie?
Pardon?
Three hundred or six hundred clients?
Six, over six hundred. She gets three hundred new ones every year just by virtue of what's happening in Calaveras County. And of course, victims of crime can feel victimized for a long period of time and so she has a carryover of about three hundred from years past.
Any, oh, there she is. Hi.
Hi, I'm Barbara and I'm the, Barbara Elbin, I'm the coordinator of the Victim Witness Program. And it's been a long time, been here a long time. We do get about, I project in that grant that we're gonna get three hundred new victims each year. That's people who reported a crime, on a violent crime. And so I kinda take them through the legal system, explain what's happening, what this court date means, do you have to show up, do you have crime-related bills? I arrange for as much as possible to get restitution orders, submit their bills for damages and pretty much carry them, lead them through the court case as best as I can with information. I think just knowing what's going on is really helpful to people, so. But then cases don't last just that one day when I talk to them. Some of these homicide cases are in the system for two years or, or a lot of cases take several months. So you have the new people and you have the ongoing people that you, you service. And I, I'm, I've been doing it by myself. I'm the only advocate for our county off and on. We've had full-time victim advocates that work with me and I've got one on the budget for starting in January. Might have to do some work on that, but that's what I'm hoping for is a second advocate that I can.
Great. So, you know, until recently, I didn't realize how important it is to, to have somebody of knowledge walk some, some folks that have no knowledge through a process because things get missed. And I certainly appreciate your, your job.
Glad to do it.
So, do we have any public comments? All right, so can I have a motion?
As the board may, before, I just wanted to mention that there is a new position that's being included as part of this grant and we will be coming back to the board with changes to the position control list once that job description has been fully vetted and we, we put it in. But we will, this will require us to come back with some adjustments to the position control list, which we will do at a future board meeting and prior to hiring.
I hope so.
So can I have...
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
So I have a motion by Supervisor Pante, second by Supervisor Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so let's move on to administrative office.
Remember that post that I gave you?
Okay, okay.
Chair? Chair, could I ask that we review number nineteen before we go into the Butte Fire? Based on past experience, the Butte Fire has taken quite a bit of time and I know we have representation here on number nineteen.
Let me see. Two things. One, I have a request from Supervisor Kearney to, after the consent agenda, to be able to speak about something. And two, before we do number nineteen, I would like to have Jason Botcher come up and give his report because he has a meeting to go to and it's really important that he gets there on time. So is that okay with you?
Chair, I'm just, same with nineteen.
I just want to ask the board, I brought this up not long after being sworn in, if we would consider moving the consent agenda after the regular agenda? When I look at these audiences, there's so many times when there are professional people waiting, people who have things on the regular agenda that are waiting to be heard. At our last meeting, several people were here to hear their regular agenda items and they actually got up and left because we had been discussing consent agenda items for so long. On, most weeks, we're pulling five items or more. And even though today we had something that took us a long time, sometimes it's a two-hour discussion on the consent agenda. It really doesn't affect the schedule of the board at all, but it, but it is, to me, an inconvenience to someone who may have traveled quite a distance to be here and to hear their item on the regular agenda, which they do have some dependence on as, as far as the schedule that it would be heard. And I don't believe if we put the consent agenda at the end of our meeting that it's going to affect how we handle our business. And I want to throw that out there.
Okay. Is that okay?
The structure of the agenda is in the chair's discretion. If, if it's the board's will and the chair would like for staff to adjust the agenda accordingly, certainly it's something that we can do.
I, I would support that position, Mr. Chair. Once again, I think, I, I would just support Supervisor Kearney's position.
Supervisor Pante?
I would support that.
Supervisor Wright?
Doesn't matter. I support that as well. Yeah, because, you know, there's, we have our staff and we have, you know, and the public that come here on a particular item and sometimes they, like today, they've had to wait for a very long time, so.
Yeah, I mean, it, yeah.
We never know what it's gonna be like.
Yeah, it's, I'm sure that it's, I'm always game to try something new. But, you know, I would probably imagine there will be other problems that we'll see with it that will come up and then we can, you know, make the adjustments from there.
I agree with that.
All right, so, public comments, Bonnie?
I'd just like to say that if today you would have reversed that, we would have had the district attorney sitting here until the last item. So you gotta decide who's, who's important because...
That's one of the issues I was thinking.
Yeah, because, I mean, if we're pulling agenda, I, I mean, items off the consent agenda, that means who's ever been represented has to stay for that discussion and today it was the district attorney on the very last item. So it's kind of fifty-fifty choice in all cases. Who's gonna pull agenda items and what kind of discussion? And we heard today that there was a mistake, this should have act, the, the one that took an hour and a half should have been on the, the regular agenda, so, you know.
Just for the board's reminder, department heads have the ability to listen to the board meeting through their computers at their desk. So if the consent agenda was moved to the end, they would not come in probably until the consent agenda was being heard.
I'm Peter Race from Fifth District. I've been through a couple of board meetings. And the consent calendar originally was meant to be so these gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen who's been sitting in behind us, they get paid no matter what. If they're sitting over here on their butt or they actually earn their keep. So it would be a very good idea for somebody to, I'm gonna pick on you, you got the final say-so and you have somewhat of a touch and feeling what could be and won't, won't be controversial. You got item twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. There was never any big, I had never experienced any big controversy on those issues from the planning department and changing zoning and stuff. Put in a consent calendar. I mean, that would have been a reasonable thing to me, maybe I'm not very reasonable. But then you have some stuff up here, you know it's gonna be. And I don't know if you have the final approval or not. And I thank you and I respect you for it. Mistakes made and I'm glad we have people who are gonna have the, to say, hey, it was an oversight. But yes, it would save a whole bunch of money and taxpayers' money because all these big-ticket items behind me, I think they can do better earning their keep than listening to this. So thank you very much if you would consider and have the final say-so on the agenda setup. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, so the board consensus is that we can go ahead and do that and I'll, I'll agree to do that. Okay? So we'll move the consent agenda to the end of the regular, after the regular agenda. All right. Anything else from the board?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Botcher?
Thank you for hanging on there. Thank you for letting me speak and provide an update to the Board of Supervisors and to the public, Jason Bates of Calaveras County Environmental Management Agency. I do have a meeting I have to get with State OES, so I appreciate it. I just want to provide an update on the debris removal process under environmental health. To date, the department has received six hundred and thirty write-of-entry forms. So we continue to have people sign up into the program and that is a positive thing. As last week, I stated that we completed the self-certification process so people that do not want to go through the write-of-entry process can contact our department for the self-certification process. We have twelve debris removal teams. We're adding four more teams this week, maybe five, and continue to add more teams the following week. So we're working out with logistics and planning as we expand our teams into, into the area. Our goal is, as I talked to my plans chief this morning, is we're, we're in all the neighborhoods and people can hear the sound of trucks and, and see activity. But with the twelve teams right now and ramping up, we have over a hundred and fifty people working out in the field, might have seen, we had Monday morning, I was notified a little late and I apologize for any kind of inconvenience it caused, but we had a six forty-five all-team site safety meeting here at the government center. It did create a little bit of chaos leaving and I apologize for that and we'll plan tactfully if that happens again. But it was pretty impressive to see all the workers in one spot, I must say. So with that being said, to, as of this morning, we have twenty-six properties cleared of debris. We're waiting, we've had, received some soil samples back on those, waiting analytical back on, on the rest of those. So we're moving as we ramp up, we're seeing an increase in properties being cleared of debris. So working on that. The current areas we're working in is continuing the west end of Jesus Maria and central end of Jesus Maria. We've now expanded, expanded teams in the McCullough Hill area, we're in the Wendell Road area and Old Gulch area. Also today, we will be completing the cleanup of the Golden Spur property, which was a pretty, pretty big property to clean up with the business there. So that is a, a kind of a milestone there and we're moving forward. So as I, I'm here, I want to remind the public and the board, our deadline date for signing up in the write-of-entry program is November sixth. We'll be working on press releases. We've been notifying the, the public, have issued previous press releases, but we'll send out another press release this week. And that's really to help facilitate getting people signed up. So it helps logistically when we're in an area, we can get people signed up versus two months from now, we don't have to go back to that area and if somebody's a latecomer into the program. So really performing a lot of outreach and getting as many people signed up in the program that want to participate. The crews are working safe. Air monitors have not picked up any asbestos or particulate matter from the crews working. So we're, you know, very cognizant if somebody's property wasn't burned next door, that we're not impeding on, on their property and protecting public health through the process. And my last note is just a reminder to the public and everybody with, all the workers, you know, we're averaging, you know, six to, you know, at least six dump trucks a day on a property. So as we expand out, there's a lot of heavy equipment on the roads to be safe and watch out for the crews as they enter the properties. And we've been working with the Joint Information Center. Please go to the Butte Fire website and also Facebook page because we're trying to put out daily updates there on our progress of the program. Any questions?
Yeah, Jason, thanks a lot for the update and the work. Been out there visiting sites and it is, it's nice to see so many people that are, you know, getting the, getting the job done. So I appreciate you keeping things moving and keeping them ramped up. You know, that's the important thing is, is, is getting those sites cleaned and so people can get back on the, on their homes, home building efforts. I do have a question and this might be more public works, but looking for help with the Calaveras grown effort. They're looking for more rice straw and more kind of coordination with, with those guys. Is there anything you can do from your department to help them?
So that's more with Mr. Krovitz, be able to assist them with the erosion control. I did meet with Mike Kerlitch last week and, and so we had a discussion. Sean and I are playing phone tag and Jeff and I tried to reach out to him. So hopefully we can touch bases, you know, this week. And, and I've spoke with Mr. Krovitz about, you know, reaching out and he might have spoke to him yesterday, so I'll let him speak to that.
Thank you.
And then just on the, on that, we also have teams performing a structured ash containment so we know the properties that we're not gonna get to right away, setting up erosion controls to contain that ash on-site. So that process isn't moving as fast as I would like, but really trying to ramp that up, so.
I have one question. There, I know there are a lot of folks out...
There, I know there are a lot of folks out there, you have six hundred and something plus write-of-entry forms signed right now, the question I've been getting is even if they had a truck or a trailer or something small or just an outbuilding, should they come in and sign up for that write-of-entry form?
So, on some of those where they haven't, if it's, I think I might have spoke to this last week too, but if they had a chicken coop or woodshed that burned and all of that is there is some metal, there was no hazardous material in that shed, my operations chief, Dean, is taking a look at it or another contractor that I have and deeming it, if it meets what Rock Creek can take, green waste and metal, not removing any ash, so there would be no hazards in that ash, and taking that, we have developed a self-certification process, but that's based on individual inspections of that property. So as we're identifying those or people contact us, we have processed probably a half a dozen those thus far and we're continuing to look at them.
So basically, anything with like a trailer house or a small camper or even a golf cart or something that had a battery or something like that, they need to, they should sign up to have it removed?
Correct, to remove that hazardous ash, that metals that could be in the ash.
Or with tires that are burnt or something like that.
Exactly, exactly.
If I may, I just want to say one thing, it's really amazing to see the number of people that are on that all crew. I got here just before six-thirty yesterday morning when the meeting was getting ready to go on and it was really amazing to see the number of people that were here and that are out there working on this.
Yeah, and you know, our goal is keeping all those people safe while we go through this process, and so that's, safety is a big concern and we, all those contractors, we have the teams, we have a bunch of local contractors in that process, and so it's a mix of people and we have developed some good teams and so it's, I feel good about where we're moving forward, so, thank you.
Thank you for your hard work there, Jason.
Thanks.
Jeff, would you mind, would you mind hanging on just for a moment, please, I'm sorry. Supervisor Ponte asked us to just take care of item nineteen first so that we can, so we don't have to hold somebody up with their, other person up with their job, so, so can we move to item number nineteen, please, on the agenda? This is authorized Board Chair to sign a letter of support for Calvares County Water District's request inclusion of language to be included in drought bills pending Congress.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I appreciate you moving me up. I just, again, wanted to return to you after the last meeting, you had asked that we needed to come, I needed to go back and make sure that my board spoke clearly and in support for the, for what you had before you. Since that time, our board met in special meeting and did adopt the attached resolution that you have in your materials, which is a resolution of support for the effort on the Warren Act contract, and list the reasons why we're pursuing this, the drought protection, the alternative water supply to the Columbia Air Attack Base, the ability to have a resource to, means to do groundwater banking in the eastern San Joaquin Basin, which overlooks a portion of our county, which could also allow us to keep more water in storage at New Hogan as well. The one thing I'd like to just note with this in addition, and I failed to mention last time, the, really the value of having access to an existing reservoir, the alternative, you know, the expense and complexity of trying to build your own reservoir, particularly surface storage reservoir, it's virtually, virtually impossible to get new projects permitted these days, and the cost would, could easily be in the hundreds of millions of dollars range, so there's a huge economic component to this and the ability to have access to an existing reservoir. And with that, I would just ask if you have any questions, I know that there was some question about what, you know, the letter of support that would come from this board, I would just say, you know, whatever you're comfortable in saying, I think that for us to be able to have the Board of Supervisors saying that this project is important for the public health and safety of our community is really what we're asking for, and so whatever means, whatever language you're comfortable in saying that, I would be very appreciative of that and our board would as well.
Okay. Public comments?
I have a comment.
Al Segala, Taxpayer Association, we appreciate the actions of CCWD on this item and the urge of support of the proposal. Also, looking ahead, I understand that New Maloney's Lake was built without federal funds, it was built with private money? There are different districts, is that not correct, Chris?
Not the New Maloney's, that was built with federal funds.
Well, may I stand corrected if you're right?
Yes.
But I think that we need to have less federal government control. The reason for that is that they're, they're, they're not thinking right, there's something wrong in their thinking process, it's almost like they're anti-human, and so, all this should not be necessary. There should not have been any release in times of drought, release of water for fish flows, it's just almost insane unless the purpose was to create harm. So, for a long-term solution, we probably need less federal government involvement. I'm not sure what the process would be to bring that about, but long-term, you need to be thinking along those lines. Thank you.
I appreciate CCWD having a special meeting, it's really good, but a couple of things that were requested from CCWD or basically representative and hopefully that you talk to your constituents, because there's a number of other agencies involved in this along Highway Four, and I do not see any additional information of the stakeholders feel about this along Highway Four, I mean, there's a committee or groups of all the other small agencies. I don't think much of past records and the present records or any changes changed from CCWD as far as achieving any credibility or integrity that I was hoping to be made, but it's not the question to me, public interest, I'm more looking at it, CCWD interest and control, and this is natural resources that affect all of you, because you do represent the whole county when it comes to natural resources, and this is a natural resource. It's not a monopoly for the benefit of CCWD administration, and that's all I see here. The administration, monopoly for CCWD, and if you take a look at the little numbers here and there, do you trust them? Do you trust their past track record? Have you seen any changes, their past record, in that, hey, give it to CCWD, they're going to take good care of you? That's not just a political issue, it's a moral issue, folks. That's what you, you go back and you talk to your constituents, how much trust faith do they have on CCWD to have a what, for forty-some years or thirty-eight years, that they will have a control and that at that discretion they will do things? They did a lot of things at that discretion and it was not to the benefit of your constituents. You might want to talk to some of those folks, talk to some of the folks up along Highway Four. Do you want to give this monopoly to CCWD? Would you want to do business with CCWD as an individual? CCWD should be part of it, folks, but don't hand them a monopoly, boy. How many times do you get, let's put it this way, not exactly favored in their activities? Do you trust them as a constituent of CCWD? And you really think that all the property owners who pay property tax to CCWD at the rate of almost two and a half billion dollars a year? Granted, they got the most prettiest warehouse in Calvares County, so it's a question of principle, integrity and honesty, and nobody ever been accused CCWD of being having that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any board comments?
One question, Mr. Eggers, is that correct?
Egerton.
Yes. Have you included the Highway Four water project, folks, in this issue?
Yes, Supervisor, we have briefed him on this effort and we will be seeking the support of every one of those agencies as part of that. Some of those, some of those members are also part of our Integrated Regional Water Management Program Group, our T-Stan, our WM Group, like Murphy Sanitation District, and they are also, have been briefed on it through that venue as well, which is also being masked through its JPA to support it as well. If you'd like to put some language in their letter that says that you would, and strongly encourage CCWD to work with the other local agencies to maximize the local benefit of this Warren Act contract, I think that would be, it's exactly in line with what we're trying to do and I think that actually would be helpful if you'd like to add something to that effect. I'm sorry, other people have a low opinion of the district and those that work there, I frankly know that the only way we're going to succeed on this is in fact if we can have a large coalition of support and other agencies and other, you know, benefits that are realized by our county to make this happen.
Yeah, I would encourage that type of language. Thank you very much.
So did, how did the CCWD board vote?
It was a four-zero vote, Director Davidson was absent.
Okay. All right, somebody, Debbie?
Thank you. Dave, thank you, I appreciate you taking this before your board and vetting it out. I'm much more comfortable with that and have my support of it. I've also heard of your work and talking to the other boards along Highway Four and gaining their supports, and I think that's forthcoming as well, and I've talked to my counterparts in Toomah County Board of Supervisors who I know also supported this effort and they too were a majority vote in supporting this, so I thank you. I just felt very uncomfortable not having your board hear this and being able to vet it out at that level, so certainly have my support at this point, thank you.
Got it, you bet, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, I actually attended that special meeting and I also showed Supervisor Ponte's position and your support in this matter.
All right, so can I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Can I have a motion by Supervisor Ponte and a second by Supervisor Olivera, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we'll discuss how that letter's going to look, okay?
Okay, thank you, thank you, members of the board, we sure appreciate it.
Thank you for doing this.
You may.
All right. Mr. Krovitz, Brian Lee, what?
Good morning, Brian Moss, the Ministry of Office, I just wanted to open up the item real quick. As the board is aware and you would have received last night, are the latest on the essential elements of information as provided by your department heads, as provided by the PIO. And in addition to that, and not represented today, is the U.S. Small Business Association, and just for the audience's sake, to date, SBA has received a hundred and fifty disaster loan applications from individuals and businesses in Calvares County, a hundred and thirty-nine home loan applications and eleven businesses made applications. They've approved twenty-nine home loans for a total of four point three million dollars in Calvares County. That's compared with the valley incident, when you put Butte and the valley together, a total of nine point three million has been given out or approved by SBA, so I think we're doing pretty well. With that said, Jeff, Jeff will be commenting, obviously he's not part of this report at this time, but certainly the assessor of the building, Department of Environmental Health has already commented, Health and Human Services, Mary Sewicki is here, and so with that said, I will turn it over to your department heads.
Hold on, Brian.
Yes, sir.
So I have, I have three quick points.
Yes, sir.
Suggestions that I have from the citizens, my constituents, your constituents. So the rice straw coordination with Calvares Grone.
Right.
I want to make sure that that gets done, that they're doing a great job out there, they're amazing volunteer, but I think we need to support them on the county level as much as we can. I would like to explore, and maybe this is a topic that we can put on the agenda if the board is willing, some way to mail to all the property owners, a packet from the county that addresses all these issues, that way we try to reach, there's always going to be people that fall through the cracks, and Cliff was telling me, a meeting he had last night with some folks that just haven't really been part of the process, and the only reason they were brought in is because of word of mouth and stuff, but I do think if we could discuss the cost and what that would look like of mailing to all the property owners that were affected, I think we, I think it would be worth the amount of money that we would spend to do that, to help those people, even if we reached one person, you know, that, that might be a life-saving letter, so I'd really like to, if you guys are at all supportive of that, talk about it some more. What do you guys think?
I actually like that idea, it's one of the things that are consistent throughout this is mail, if they don't have, even if their, even if their mailbox has been burnt down, I'm sure that they've found another way to get mail, and so if you mail something to their mailbox, it probably will make it to some PO box or something else that has been set up. I don't, I don't know that logistic, but...
I think in those situations where the mailboxes have been destroyed, you can mail to general delivery or the post office there, I guess the word would be, somebody through our PIO or somebody saying that your mailbox destroyed, check general delivery at the post office, that might help that program.
Since we're meeting every week, Brian?
Yes, sir.
Could you bring us back the cost of the mailing at the next meeting? It sounds like a good idea to me, too, and I...
Yeah, at least explore it.
Yeah, and maybe we can make a decision on it or authorize it.
We can't make a decision right now.
No.
But we can, we can...
That's why I said the next meeting.
So it's a suggestion, right?
For about six hundred, property, so it'd be about three hundred and fifty dollars to mail.
Postage?
For a regular...
Post guide.
Not excessively mailing.
So I guess...
Three hundred and fifty?
So I guess admin can make that decision, huh?
Yeah, you can.
Well, I just want to, I just want to have it get done, and so however we...
It's a good suggestion.
I could do it, yes.
It's a good suggestion.
There's a lot of things I could, but unfortunately, I'm not a wealthy individual, so, my wife will get very angry at me if I start spending my measly savings on it.
I would say we could direct admin to do it then, is that correct?
That's the cost of the mailing.
Well, let's talk about...
Putting it together, a label, stuffing, that's just the postage.
You're talking probably about fifteen hundred.
So our, so our next meeting will come, we'll come with the results of that, right?
Okay, great, thank you. And then... Real quick, just to say on that particular topic, this has been discussed at our weekly meetings, as a matter of fact, and one of the things that has been done in the interim is to send the packets out with Mary Sewicki's staff, and I want to say Jason's staff as well, so that to make sure that, you know, a lot of this is being hand-delivered at this point, but certainly we can do that as well.
So don't take Mary's thunder away, I'm sure that's part of her discussion.
Oh, she has a lot more thunder, I'm sure.
So then, one last thing, who do I, or can you make it so, the aerial data that we have that's with GIS, can we share that with East Bay Mud?
Well, I don't see why not, we'll have to look into that. I do know that they're, they're looking at refining that aerial data as well, so I know Cliff has been part of those meetings as well, so, again, a special district like East Bay Mud, I think would probably only need to make a public records request and make it real simple and unless, unless Cal OES knows something that I don't, I don't see why that would be an issue.
So Chris Swan is the on-the-ground ranger manager who's working on the restoration in our county? If I forward you his contact, can you work with him?
Of course.
To make that happen?
Of course.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian.
Any other questions? I will tell you, overall, things are going very, very well. Cal OES and FEMA and your department heads, everybody's really stepping up through this process, so thank you for the support as we move through this process.
One quick question, I know you're a busy man, how many FEMA trailers have we placed so far?
Two.
Two?
Two, and they were on properties that were not, were not affected by the fire. Two, and they were on properties that were not affected by the fire. There were actually, I want to say, more than two delivered. There was one that was delivered that they had to turn around because they didn't check the size of the modular itself, so it wasn't, they weren't able to get up on the property. So that's my understanding at this point.
So as of yesterday, you know, I watched Building Department and FEMA and Mr. Abosar, and I think Brian was there, all work all that out so that they have the proper process for FEMA to come up and to make sure that there's no glitches on that sort of thing, because these properties are supposed to be pre-inspected to make sure that the FEMA trailer can, in fact, go up. And I'm pretty sure that we're going to catch a little bit more information on that later because we have Charlie here, who's, it's pretty up-to-date on that sort of thing, so...
Absolutely. Thank you.
Real quick, I have to run off to a meeting with Cal Fire. Jeff Probitz, Public Works Director, just to give you guys updates from what's gone on since I was last in front of you last Tuesday. I've convened, or not I, but we have convened and met with a Emergency Planning and Emergency Response Group so that we can do our outreach. The event, the rain event that's happening this afternoon, this evening, through tomorrow will not be horrible, less than a half an inch over that period of time, so while we will get some mobilization of ash and soils, it should not be catastrophic. To that end, I have mobilized a sandbag station today and tomorrow in Mountain Ranch for residents who provide proof of residency, limited number of sandbags for each resident. If they come asking for a large number, it may indicate that we need to take a look at their site, and there might be a better method. The intent of the sandbags is really structure protection in front of the doors, the sills that are in imminent, exigent harms way.
On the sandbags, sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
There's that one property owner that was needing a lot of them. Have you contacted them?
No, I haven't got to that. I had a little email glitch yesterday and the day before, so I haven't had a chance to circle back to that.
Okay. You got it on your list?
I think I do. I hope if not, I will let you know.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you Supervisor, right? There are, just in terms of the information going out, in terms of the stages, the phases of watershed stabilization, watershed support reconstruction, following the fire, the first phase was a Cal Fire report and the work that they're doing for post-suppression repair. And that was a report with 26 items that were potential threat to live property infrastructure. The second phase really has to do with those specific areas and the areas within the creeks and streams that represent further danger that would require permitting from resource agencies, and that report is nearly finished. It's currently in review. My meeting five minutes ago was to start going over that. Third phase, of course, of restoration is what happens with county and private forces, and there's a number of movements afoot on that. I did have a long conversation yesterday with Calabres Grum, talking about what they're doing, corresponding with him as to what county is doing, and also corresponding with him concerning grant application that is being looked upon very favorably right now by FEMA and Cal OES at the Joint Task Force in Sacramento. That's a $441,000 grant with $147,000 match, and that would be the one, that's the first one of substantive money allowing us to enter private property for watershed restoration activities, so that is in process. And one correction with Chris Swan and East Bay Mud, the work that they're doing, I would not call restoration yet, what they're doing is stabilizing Ponderosa Road.
Whatever you want to call it.
Well, it's important because dollars follow the words. So what East Bay Mud is doing with one of the crews of CCC is currently stabilizing Ponderosa Road from SR-26 down to the Milk River, so that we can have a corridor of access throughout the winter. And the East Bay Mud crews, I think today they're up to now starting to shoot some seed and binder to kind of seal in the straw that they've done, and they've done some selective contour felling of trees, and then my crews will follow that up with some base rocks starting from the top and working down to stabilize that roadway, because that is the only access to that side of the river. So I will follow up more as I get more certainty of what's going on. Does the Board have any questions of me?
How many CCC crews do you have working?
I currently have three crews. The crews range from about 10 to 17, plus I've got support staff, that is cooking, shopping. They're currently deployed up at Mountain Ranch at the community center. They're utilizing the showers and the laundry facilities that were provided. Those facilities have been extended by contract. Mary Rose and I discussed this morning the potential of relocating them at the end of the contract up to the park here in San Andreas, but we have a little bit more work to do. I think that's actually a better site since the crews deploy to different directions, and San Andreas seems to be a little more centralized for both the 26 corridor as well as the central burn area out of Mountain Ranch. And as I get a little closer into this, I will probably be requesting more CCC crews for felling activities, tree felling activities, and other support activities. And then just quickly, in terms of county road crews work, we have removed all hazard trees that we know of right now from Mountain Ranch, from Railroad Flat, from Sheep Ranch. That was done last week with the aid of a deployed forester from Cal Fire verifying those trees, and the crews are now out on some of the smaller roads that we know we have residents that are still attempting to live out at their homes that didn't burn within the fire area of severe fire burn areas. So places like Doster, East Murray Creek, West Murray Creek, we're doing those routes. We're moving on to those right now. Any questions?
Jeff, real quick, the Mountain Ranch baseball field, after those all moved, that base is no longer there, everything's moved out, the county is going to refurbish that baseball field?
Yeah, I talked with Mary Rose about that this morning, but until, you know, and she's doing the research to find out when they need it so we can start back planning.
Okay.
But yeah...
But it's on the list.
It's on the list. I mean, that, to me, is considered fire damage. It was a, and it still is, and it may very well remain, a center of operations, and so I'm not going to make any...
It's pretty minor in the realm of the scope of the disaster, but just to return life to kind of normal, playing baseball is a good symbol, so...
You and I both agree, even though my baseball days are over. Playing days are over.
One quick question, Director Probitz. Are you getting everything you need?
It's coming. It's coming, and it's starting to fit in. A lot of the problems that I'm having is my own lack of education, and so as I'm learning the alphabet soup of what we call things, and I learned that I can't just ask for help, it has to be an Emma request, or a mutual aid request, or some, I have to learn how to fit within the process and the procedure, and that is, I'm getting there, getting there quickly, and yes, FEMA and Cal OES are quite responsive to what I'm asking.
Yeah, so that was one of the things that I noticed was, we don't really know the process for FEMA or Cal OES, and which, a person like you who's actually, you know, responding, because that's the position that you've been put in, instead of trying to manage that because you can't because of your response, makes it very difficult for you to be able to figure all that alphabet soup out. And so, I talked, you know, I talked to Cal OES about that, too, and asked them, geez, you know, it'd be really great to be able to have somebody that knows the system to be able to come in and say, "Hey Jeff, what do you need?" And I think we're getting closer to that now. Cal OES and FEMA has been pretty darn responsive here in the meetings I've been to lately.
They're doing great, and I'm starting to figure out what I'm supposed to be doing, and I'm trying to show up there three to five times a week in the morning and brief with Fred and Al and...
Charlie.
Charlie. Charlie's my best friend, did you know that?
He's becoming my best friend, too.
Okay. All right, if that's it, I'd need to run off to Cal Fire, and I'll see you later this afternoon for Public Works item.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
For what you're doing.
And I'll give you a report on SR-26 then as well. Thank you.
Great. All right. Oh, sorry, we have public comments on that, sorry.
Peter needs his five minutes.
I'm not going to use five minutes. I'm just glad that, I want to thank these gentlemen that they've worked, and hope they're going to be very successful. And I want to thank Brian Moss, because I'm sure he checked those trailers that being over here is another surplus from New Orleans, I hope. And I hopefully that we're going to be rain-ready, because there might be a little rain here and there, it's coming next couple of days, so I'm sure they all thought about it and it's going to be controlled, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
House of Congress Taxpayer Association, I'm amazed at all the complex things that are being done and the benefits, or at least mitigating some of the losses that are occurring. Also, I agree with Chris Wright, reaching out to property owners, probably use the roll, probably mail to their addresses, which would then go to the post office to care of the postmaster if the mailbox is destroyed, would be a great idea. But in that mail-out, ought to be a questionnaire, and the question should be pretty simple. In your opinion, what could have been done to prevent your home from being lost, or prevent the homes from being lost? You might get some insight from the property owners on suggestions. They could be having further area of clearing around the property, maybe 200 feet. It could be response times. It could be, heaven knows, they may have some ideas that may have been, could be done that would prevent the loss of their property. And that'd be good information to have, and perhaps there might be enough value in that information to, the next time there's a major fire, that you wouldn't have the losses that we have now. The second thing that we're concerned about is trying to protect the property owners as much as possible from any unnecessary bureaucracy or activities or regulations that would, that hurt them above what their losses already have. There is a significant effort to inspect every property beyond the initial inspection for obvious hazards, to clear the debris from the structures of possible pollutants that could harm people. And I'm wondering, this ties into another body of regulations put on them as to where they can put their temporary structure. You already know about the 150 feet. It'd be good to look at the science behind this, to see if this is perhaps overkill. I haven't heard of other structural fires where you would have the ashes, which would contain hazardous materials, obviously, you know, like lead and asbestos and whatever, having that much regulation, the disposal of the debris would normally be done by companies that specialize in that. In this case, I understand it's being done by government, but the question is, is there any science behind that? Is this a real problem or not? If it's not, then maybe that process needs to be modified a little bit to expedite the people being restored under property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rosemary Wilson from the Calumbee Hill, I might be stating the obvious here, but a lot of homes are going to be having 200-foot clearance, whether they want it or not, judging by all the devastation that has happened.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Great. Mary?
Mary Sewicki, Director of Health and Human Services. I'd like to give you the update. Most of these statistics are cumulative now since 9/9/15. On our client outreach in the outstations, Railroad Flat, we're now up to 15 contacts, Mountain Ranch 55, and West Point 138. On the visits out to the actual home sites, there's, were up to 236 cumulative of those homes that were okay, were 147, and those homes that were destroyed so far that we visited were 53. We will be concluding that particular route at the end of this week because those two workers really need to get back to their day jobs. On, they, as of last week, delivered seven food boxes, hygiene items, dog and cat food, gas cards, Visa gift cards, undergarments, water, tools, propane bottles, tents, batteries, and flashlights. The usage on the contract on showers last week was 15 people daily in Mountain Ranch and 45 loads per day for the laundry service. We finished up the CalFresh disaster benefits. The new cases overall that were received were 33, that impacted 53 people benefiting for a total of $9,544. The cases on aides that received some supplemental assistance were eight, and the number of people that were assisted were 20, the amount was 1,414. The number of CalFresh benefits that were provided to replace due to the food loss, which was the number one issue, were 793 cases impacting 1,385 people. The amount was $104,099.65. Our adult services workers since 9/9/15 served so far 215 clients or made visits out to residents. A lot of those were APS calls on, for a variety of reasons, calls about people who were out just on their property some without literally lots of different things. Some were just sleeping on their land, not having anything. They've delivered things anywhere from tents to sleeping bags to prescriptions, you name it. Some of those were also people who were needing placement because their homes had burned down, and the person could no longer care for that person, so we did placements, just a whole variety of different things. As I mentioned last week, we were doing two sessions under the mental health program, Mental Health 101. They were in Mountain Ranch, one on the 19th where eight people attended, and on the 20th, 10 people attended, and we have two more sessions coming up, one in Railroad Flat and one in West Point, and I'll be talking about those in the future. Under the grants, just to let you know, six people who received the FEMA maximum grant of $32,900. They also received the state supplemental grant of $10,000 additional, so that will help those particular individuals. In addition, just to let you know, we're working right now with the state Home and Community Development Department, having a conference call on November 4th, because we have about $54,000 additional CDBG funds that we have left over because of some repayments. We're asking to add those into the $93,000 to use for some folks. We've had a number of questions and issues that have arisen. For example, some of the questions are arising about power poles on people's properties. In addition, some people who are off the grid would like to have that being considered, so we just are putting together a list of questions to have that conference call on November 4th before we bring to you that whole issue in a public hearing on November 10th. So hopefully I'll have the answers by then for you.
That's a very good question about the, I met several people yesterday, actually, that had, were off the grid, they were using solar, and it got... that, um, had, had, were off the grid. They were using solar and it got, uh, fried, worse than it fries. And so they're, they're concerned about not being able to, uh, get any kind of, uh, temporary housing because they are not on PG&E.
Yeah. And, and that's what we're having that discussion and, and having, you know, the conference call about because our thought was, you know, California certainly promotes it, so let's have that conversation.
I don't think it's the temporary housing because I think our, our emergency ordinance already covered that with the generator. But it's the, I think it's beyond that when they go to, um, apply for their permit to rebuild. I think that's where it's gonna be an issue.
Well, for us, it's the issue of providing the funding, you know, the community development block grant funding for some of the replacement costs. If you can replace some of the costs, for example, towards, let's say, the PG&E parts that might have burned, could you not also do that for some of the others? And that's what we're going to find out.
So, and, and I-
Permit I can't do.
I think we've said this before and you probably know this, the, um, the, um, Calaveras Realtor Association will pay for the permit for the pole. And the, I believe they have, uh, they should have applications at billiards. Right now, sitting on the counter, that all they have to do is fill out that application to qualify for that.
Yeah. I'm just trying to answer questions in general for the Home and Community Development folks. Yes?
The last meeting that we mentioned, uh, having something, uh, report on McColty Hill outreach?
Yeah. We're still doing that. It's just all part of the general requests. I wasn't able to obtain that separately yet. I'm still working on that.
Okay. And then possibly look into, uh, if you, if you would, uh, maybe having a, a meeting in, in Moak Hill with the mental, uh, health, uh, issue because the more people in Moak Hill actually were hit, affected directly by the fire than West Point.
Yeah. We've actually had a worker out there. Um, and I'll just get another report if you want.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Any other things?
Have you been contacted by, uh, Amador, um, what is it, the Health and Human Services Agency about, uh, a grant that they received to be able to help with, um, some of this outreach?
I met yesterday with Nexus on the mental health outreach that they've applied for via Sutter. If that's what you're thinking about. And I've also met with, um, the Calaveras Foundation on the money that they receive via the Amador Foundation.
Thank you.
Question. Um, Mary, are you still the kind of liaison to Red Cross or your department or your arena? All right. I just, you know, I wanted to share a story because it was, uh, a system that I didn't think would work well. To my understanding of those who went into a evacuation shelter or those who became affiliate with Red Cross, could sign up for a program called Safe and Sound. What is it? Safe and Well, thank you. I'm thinking of a song probably, Safe and Well. So if the, if a person was at a evacuation shelter, the Red Cross was signing people up onto this program. And this was a way for family members or friends who did not live in the immediate area, say they lived in Florida, they could sign up for the program as well, Safe and Well. And based on the information, then they got a connection to say, yes, mom or dad made it to the evacuation shelter and they're established a communication process for folks to be able to communicate with each other via the Red Cross. So I, I know at the fairgrounds, you know, that was one of our missions to get everybody signed up onto that. And I know the other shelters, you know, went along the same line and that was a real Red Cross push if somebody came into a shelter to do that kind of registration and then getting the word out to people who perhaps didn't live in the area to be able to connect. So I personally had 17 folks that, um, I, I registered with and received a number of phone calls from people primarily on the East Coast trying to find mom or dad living in the burned area, wanting to make connection. They couldn't get a hold of them. Phones are down, et cetera. You know, mom, dad being 80-plus and whether they're evacuating, et cetera. So I heard all sorts of stories. So I encouraged them to sign onto this program and just hopes that, you know, the connection would be made. So I've had these 17 names and phone numbers with me now for a month. And this last week, I've spent time in contacting each and every one of them. And I'm happy to say out of these 17 people that I had personal contact with, they all made connection. And, um, you know, it was something that I just didn't know would work or not and how people could make that connection. So I'm hoping that there are many, many other there's because I was told by the Red Cross that they had close to 500, 600 people registered into this program. And the 17 that I had direct connection with, it was very heartwarming to know that the program worked, that they made connection. And a few of them, I followed up to go visit them out in the burned area to see that they were okay. And I just had to put my eyes on it to know for sure that everything was okay.
That's good.
So I think that's one Red Cross program that, you know, I had some concerns of Red Cross throughout the process, but that was one program that I felt was a good way for those who are trying to contact loved ones in this kind of emergent crisis situation going on to know that there was an avenue for them to make some connection at some point.
Good. You know, I was asked by the state to join them when they do a debriefing on the fire. And, um, I'll let them know that.
Yeah. And there, like I said, there could be others. I'm just familiar with the ones I had personal connection with.
Good. Because they told me they're gonna have the state Red Cross folks there.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mary.
Marty Craig, Red Cross. Uh, with regard to the Safe and Well, it's not just during a disaster. It's anytime. If you, um, take off on a vacation or something and your family wants to know how you are, you can post on there and you have control over what you post and what you don't and who can see it and who can't. So it's, it's anytime. I'm going on vacation, whatever. So it's anytime.
Must be about five or six weeks since, since the beginning of the fire. And a couple of days ago, I was filling up with gas at the, um, uh, the, this, the trading post at McColty Hill. And I found the public announcement board. So, um, there is one in McColty Hill, but maybe I'm just blind and I'm the last person ever to have seen it. But I, I finally found it. So thank you for putting it in a prominent position.
Trap, trap lines, I think they call them.
The trap, yeah. Yeah. I had, I had been looking by the library, by the post office. Uh, I go to Frank's when he's open. And, uh, there I was filling up with gas and I, I came across it.
Good. Any other public comments here? Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Okay, who's next? Peter? Charlie? I know. Putting you on the spot, aren't I?
Charlie Simpson, CalOES, um, Division Supervisor for you here in Calaveras County. It's been a pleasure working with your, uh, CAO's office, your department heads and others as we move forward in this process. I'd like to say that I am amazed how quickly things have gone. It may seem very slow to all of you and very slow to the public, but in the big scheme of things, as disaster operations go, your staff has pushed things through amazingly fast. So I want to acknowledge them publicly. It's been a pleasure working with all of them. You had some questions directly about the mobile housing units. And if possible, I'd like to defer directly to Fred Warenburg, who's the FEMA Division Supervisor who has direct conduit with that program. Fred, do you mind speaking to their questions on that? And then, uh, after, I'd also like to address the East Bay Mud imagery question.
Okay.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Fred Warenburg with FEMA Operations, Division Supervisor for Calaveras County. Uh, if you have specific questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. If you'd like, I can give you a synopsis of what I know first. We have, um, I believe now we have actually three manufactured housing units, or MHUs, that have been delivered into the county. Uh, and FEMA will be working directly with the, uh, building inspectors and the planning department to facilitate, um, that, that inspection process and getting the proper permits in place. These first three were the result of a, kind of a short-term, um, contract that was established just to fill the gap until the longer-term contract was in place. So throughout the response, which included both Calaveras and Lake Counties, we were targeting a total of seven, delivering seven, uh, MHUs between the two counties. And I think we actually got five that, uh, that were delivered. The next cou- the next contract should be in place, uh, in the next week or two. And, and once we have that in place, the contract requirements are for the contractor to work directly with the county permitting and inspection officials to, uh, work out the schedule for that. We will incorporate the debris clearance process into that decision-making so that we can ensure that we're going to, um, that we're actually putting MHUs on properties that have been cleared. And we're going to actually try and get that information to the debris folks in advance so that we can try and target and prioritize the clearance of some of those sites that have been designated feasible for the installation of one of these units.
So you wanna, uh, explain clearance, clearance?
The, what we're talking about is the, the certified, I think the certified clean is the terminology that Jason's group is using, that, uh, the county, um, environmental health department is using. So throughout their process, they've got several screening processes where they do some sample collection and some screening in advance. They move in, they, they begin removal through, initially it's the household hazardous waste. That's followed by the other debris on the site, including the, the metals and, and other things that didn't burn. That is then followed up with removal of the ash. Uh, and then eventually the, the surface is scraped to, down to a depth of a couple of inches, I believe. And then there are some confirmation samples that are collected. When the results of those confirmation samples are, uh, acceptable to the environmental health director, based on the, on the criteria that he has established, then the, the site is deemed to be cleared.
So what about the 150-foot clearance?
Well, that county ordinance, that 150-foot setback, if you will, is, um, my understanding is that that has been put in place for those properties that have a large enough space that they could put one of these MHUs on the property prior to it being cleared. And that setback would be sufficient to, uh, avoid any type of health hazard.
So, and, and that would be a, a case-by-case basis?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, good.
Other questions?
That was really consistent with yesterday. That makes me feel happy.
Strive for consistency.
Yeah, that was great.
Are you guys working on the, uh, the mobile home parks up in Railroad? Uh, looking at sites?
So, right. We have, uh, in addition to locating MHUs on private property, we also look at commercial sites, which are existing mobile home parks or RV sites, places like that. We have, uh, thanks to, uh, Supervisor Edson's, um, information, we have started to look at those two sites up in Railroad Flat. We have, uh, Lakeside and Calaveras Valley. The guys that do that have specific criteria and they're working specifically with the owner of that site to try and ascertain what those details might be. But it seems like that one might be, might be feasible, at least under the initial inspection that they've done.
The Calaveras one, the one closest to Railroad Flat?
Uh, I believe they're looking at both of those. Now, there are some improvements that we might need to occur. The one thing that we run into a lot is the electrical service. We need a 200-amp service for each unit, which is substantial, but it's all, everything in there is electric. So that's my understanding of why it's, it's required to be 200 amps.
That's the big hangup.
Electric stove, electric oven, electric water heater, electric dryer, you know. So, uh, all of that stuff draws a lot of power. So those are typically the types of improvements that need to get made. But what we'll do, I mean, i- if there's an improvement that needs to be made at a commercial site, we'll work with the owner to, to figure out the best way to, to pay for that. And, and if the, if it's something that, that PG&E does, that's, there may or may not be a charge for that. If it is, uh, an upgrade that the owner of the site is responsible for, they can either amortize the cost of that over the time of the lease or in some cases, uh, we may assist them with that in advance and then that cost is subtracted from the lease. It's really very case-by-case and, and we leave it up to the, the folks in the housing, uh, section to work out those details.
Right. Well, thank you for looking at those.
Is that the only site you're looking at in the county, those open railroad flats?
Uh, I would say it's not the only site. They're looking at a number of sites, but I, I really don't have all, all the details on where they're looking. We, you know, we try and, um, we try and keep those guys focused on, on that work effort and not involve too many people in it because what we find then is that we, we have issues with rumors that, uh, you know, that FEMA is gonna put trailers here. And then something invariably comes up where there's a problem and we end up not doing it. And then we, we have to do damage control on that information. So we try and restrict it to the guys that are professionals that are going out and looking at that.
Great. Good. Thank you.
Question. Um, how many homes are you taking a look or do you have requests for?
Homes, you mean-
Temporary housing.
For the, for the mobile home units?
Yes.
You know, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. I, I think that there are, it's a, it's a substantial number. And really, I would be guessing if I, if I put a number out there. But I can find out and get that information back to Brian and he can get that information.
And what point is there a trigger point to say, yes, we're going to do this? What, what's the process?
Well, there, there are a number of criteria. Um, again, the, uh, it's, it's all about their registration and, um, if it has to go on their, if, if their property is feasible, uh, there's a-
Let me clarify. How about the, 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 the commercial aspect of it?
Oh, for the commercial sites?
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's primarily about access and, um, the presence of the utilities sufficient to support what we're going to stage on that site. The agreement that gets established in place with the, with the owner of the site. Uh, there's a duration for the lease. For example, I believe it's 18 months. And if, uh, just using an example, if there were a mobile home park that had, uh, an event throughout the summer that they like to have people come visit in their mobile homes and we put a bunch of manufactured housing units that take up that entire mobile home park for 18 months, then those people would not be able to visit that mobile home park or that, uh, I'm thinking of, I'm sorry, an RV park, not a mobile home park, but an RV park.
Okay.
So that's, that's one of the considerations. Um, again, and, and the utilities, uh, the, in particular septic capabilities for these units because these are, these would not be, if it were an RV situation, you know, in an RV, you don't have people taking showers and doing laundry and living there permanently. So the septic system may not be able to support, uh, something like that.
No longer. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, Charlie Simpson with CalOES. Supervisor Wright, I believe you had a question about East Bay Mud accessing the post-fire imagery.
Yeah, I, I got an email from, uh, Chris, Crystal on, uh, earlier this morning about it. And so I just wanted to give them the info.
We have a meeting at 1:00 to, uh, discuss the existing imagery and whether that's adequate to meet the county's needs. Uh, we can address the issue and then of access with the experts that are gonna be here to help us through that process. My first thought is they should be able to access that directly as a government entity. But I'm not sure. So if you could forward that information either directly to me or to Brian and send to me, then we will, we will take that request forward.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any other questions, Abby?
Have we, just, uh, have we, have we kinda moved forward a little bit on the communications issue at all? Or are we still, we're still trying to figure that out?
We have about five different aspects of communications. The first, um, being the safety issues for the debris teams that are in the area that have little to no communications in the event someone gets hurt. Uh, we've, we have finally found a radio solution, which is supposed to be delivered later this afternoon to equip each of the teams. afternoon to equip each of the teams, and the expansion as Jason moves forward with additional teams with some form of a radio communication that would seek, summon help should they need it. Then we have several different things going on on the public communication side, you know, still examining what existing communications are. The, as, as we all know, the A T and T hard copper wire is gonna be several months for, for many of those residents, and a lot of that area had not, did not have a cellular footprint prior to the fire, but we're looking at several different things of, of commercial aspects, as well as the existing emergency alert system and the NOAA weather radio systems that may be able to get signals into those areas where people are residing in homes that were not burned in the fire but have little to no communications. We had a federal expert in here doing an evaluation yesterday, there were several meetings with the sheriff's department on the alerting and warning aspects of this, of if there is a post-fire debris flow, rainfall event, how to get that information out. The information that also I believe is included in the packets that the P I O was putting out of being aware that if there are significant rain flows, you may be in danger, so a multitude of things going on. There is no one perfect solution, it's gonna be a combination and an overlay of several different things, but I think before we get, I don't want to minimize the event that may come through this evening and tomorrow, but before we get significant rainfall, we hope to have a good system in place.
What was your name again?
Charlie Simpson.
Yeah, I just said it to Brian. Thank you, Charlie. Any questions from the public? Okay. Yeah, just before we go to lunch, I wanna mention something. Any questions from the board?
I'd like to at least deal with the Sanguenetti, they have been here since-
Okay.
This morning.
But I, I just wanted to mention also, for the emergency alerts, the station to tune into is K O S O F M ninety-three point one, that's where the emergency alerts go to, and so for the public, and you're out there, there's, at least try to have a radio with you, because when we have these significant rainfalls, as they come up, this one here doesn't expect to be that bad, but as they come up, you might wanna consider having a radio that, that, that is available on, so that you can listen for these alerts, because they're gonna be pretty specific, they're gonna be county-wide, but also pretty specific. The debris flows and mudslides are imminent, and so we need to let people be aware of that, and so that they don't get trapped in a situation where they can't get out of. And these, these are not like water flows, these debris flows are faster than you can run, so if you think you're a real fast runner, you're not that fast.
What was the, the radio again?
K O S O F M ninety-three point one. That's our, that's our local station that, that picks up this area.
Supervisor Chair Edson, I just, my thought was twenty through twenty-four, 'cause they dealt with ag preserve, and the folks are there.
All right, let's do number twenty. Hey Gina.
I had to run. I thought you guys were gonna break for lunch.
It's really good for you, you know?
Okay. Are we doing Sanguenetti first?
Yeah, uh, let's see, Sanguenetti, yes.
Okay. Where'd it go? Okay.
Chair, I just wanted to clarify, are you going to be handling twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two together?
If we can, that'd be great.
Yeah, through, through twenty-four is what I wanted to do, yeah.
Can they act on?
Twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two.
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Right, so we have three separate actions. Okay. Okay, so, much like we've discussed before with the other ag preserves, there's several different actions that we'll have to take in regard to this one. First of all, Sanguenetti Cattle Ranch L L C, they originally filed a lotline adjustment, and that was basically to reestablish some boundary lines to make it more, you know, workable, if you will, for the family. In addition to that, they've added some land to the existing ag preserve, so as a result of the lotline adjustment, they will need to, as we hear today, because we have an application, they had to make an application to apply for a new ag preserve, which would simultaneously disestablish the existing ag preserve, adding that acreage, total acreage would be one thousand five hundred and eighty-eight acres, thereabouts. In addition to the fact that some of the property that they're taking into the new ag preserve is currently not affected by an ag preserve, therefore it's currently zoned A one general ag, so to be consistent with the Williamson Act, they would have to rezone the properties. So we have before us findings to approve the lotline adjustment. The next, the next resolution would be to disestablish existing contract three-one-two, and, and establish the new contract three-four-six, and the last, and the last action would be to adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning of the subject properties that are going into the ag preserve from A one to A P.
Okay. All right, any, any public comments?
That should've been a consensus.
I'm looking into that. I heard, heard Peter's comments earlier, and it's not clear to me what government code is exactly saying in regard to a public hearing, it just says basically that the planning department is responsible for providing with you, providing you with a report, and that you have to take action, but we'll look into that.
Certainly we can look into it, but zoning amendments is something that requires a public hearing, and public hearings have to be on the regular agenda, cannot be on consent.
Right.
And so certainly we can look at, at other avenues, but typically all of these have been brought together to keep all the actions heard in conjunction with one another, they've all been put on the regular agenda, but public hearings, when something is required to be a public hearing by statute, which many of these actions are, it has to be on the regular agenda.
Yeah, so-
Regardless if it's, if there's-
This one would've had to be here regardless, but certainly if we find otherwise, that some of the other ones that you've already heard this year would have not needed a public hearing, but Megan and I'll collaborate on that and figure it out for next year, but the four that will be coming to you subsequent to today all have zoning amendments attached to them, so they have to become, they have to go before a public hearing, so there's no choice.
Yeah, we okay right now? All right. Can I get a?
I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty, for the L L A fifteen slash sixteen for Sanguenetti Cattle Ranch L L C.
Okay.
Can we do them all together?
No.
No, let's do them separately.
I second the motion.
Okay, so I have a motion by Supervisor Ponti, second by Supervisor Kearney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, five, zero. Motion for twenty-one?
I'll make a motion to de-establish the ag preserve contract number three-twelve and establish ag preserve contract for three-four-six for Sanguenetti Cattle Ranch L L C.
I second the motion.
We have a motion by Supervisor Ponti, and second by Supervisor Kearney, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Posed, five, zero. Okay, number twenty-two?
I'll make a motion to approve the zoning amendment two-zero-one-four dash oh-six-five from A one to A P for the Sanguenetti Cattle Ranch L L C.
Second the motion.
So I have a, a motion by Supervisor Ponti, second by Supervisor Kearney, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, five, zero. All right, good. Number twenty-three?
Okay, so the next two items, similar situation, lotline adjustment associated with the disestablishment and the establishment of a new contract. So we have before us approximately nine hundred and forty-six point four-eight acres, better known as the Snyder Ranch down in the Valley Springs area. So this land was previously owned by John and Betty Snyder. Now, we've got their four daughters, we've got Joanne, Susan, Janet, and Mary Ann, and they are doing a little family planning, if you will, dispersing land and ownership of the properties within the ag preserves. Currently, they've got three contracts, contract number one-twenty-six, eighty-A and eighty-B, which makes up the entire nine hundred and forty-six acres. So in the process of them dis, of establishing new boundaries and ownership of this, of the land within the contracts, they had to do a lotline adjustment. For one particular parcel is thirty-seven acres, basically the lotline adjustment pretty much divides the property in half, gives a portion of it to, to Joanne and Susan and Janet, and then the southern portion of it will connect on to an adjacent piece of property that will be owned by, by Mary Ann and her husband. So what you have before you is the lotline adjustment, which helps to establish that new boundary, and as a provision of approval of that lotline adjustment, the new application for the two new ag preserves, three-forty-three for Joanne Randall, Susan Snyder, Batson, and Janet Adamick for seven hundred and fifty-seven point seven oh acres, in addition to contract number three-four-four for Leslie and Mary Ann Strojan for a hundred and eighty-eight point seven eight acres. So obviously approving those two contracts would disestablish the other three, one-twenty-six, eighty-eight, and eighty-B, and there's no additional lands going in or out of the ag preserve. Basically, they're taking the land that's encumbered by the three ag preserves, taking care of the three, and making them two.
Okay, all right. Any public comments on this? No? Okay, how about the board?
I make a motion to approve the findings for L L A fifteen dash oh-four for Randall, Batson, Adam, and Strojan.
Okay, second. So I got a motion by Supervisor Kearney, and second by Supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, five, zero, that takes care of twenty-three, twenty-four. Got a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve to disestablish ag preserve contracts number eighty-A, number eighty-B, and number one-twenty-six, and establish ag preserve contracts number three-forty-three for Joanne Randall, Susan Snyder, Batson, and Janet Adamick, and number three-forty-four for Leslie, Dan Strohan, and Mary Ann Strohan.
Okay, second. So I got a, a motion by Supervisor Kearney, and second by Supervisor Wright, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna take a, we're gonna take a one-hour lunch. Great, thank you.